Thank you and welcome, everybody. And I'm going to call this meeting with Gloucester School Committee to order. The mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engage lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such that in-person meetings at school committee is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And that being said, Maria, can we have a roll call for attendance?
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Favazza. Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
And Ms. Weason.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Everybody is here. I will ask you now to join me in the salute to the flag. As soon as I get it up there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a very long meeting tonight and it's very warm out, so I'm going to try to, for everybody's sake, move this along as fast as we can. So do we have any recognitions other than Sam for her birthday? Joel.
Thank you. I'll be as quick as I can, but I have a few. Starting off, I want to thank John McElhenney. I don't know if you've known, he's been submitting articles to the Gloucester Times about GHS grads who have accepted to and going to Ivy League schools. So, thank you, John. Recognize Mila Barry and Cam Yuni, too, that I've seen so far in the newspaper. And also want to recognize graduates from the class of 2020, 2019, 18, et cetera. I think it's important for the public to know that although this feature in the Gloucester Times is new this year, Gloucester High sending prestigious national universities is not new, it's a fairly regular occurrence. And obviously, we're out of, you know, everyone who pulls that. I also want to recognize the other GHS grads. It doesn't matter if they're going into career, military, trade school, two-year school, four-year school, taking off even. You know, you've survived not just the already task of growing up in the 21st century. You had this global pandemic that was like the cherry on the sundae that is adolescence, right? So congratulations and recognition to all of you taking it this far. I want to recognize all of our bus drivers, our students safe while navigating 40-foot-long, eight-foot-wide, 13-ton monsters of vehicles through intersections that were designed in the 17th century and doing so with more skill and precision than any tourist. And if we're being honest, most of the locals. So congratulations, your recognition to you guys as well. Recognize all of our crossing guards who stood out in the freezing cold this year, the pouring rain, and this week, the blazing heat. Make sure that our students get where they're going safely. Want to recognize all of our food service workers who had learned an entirely new way to serve food to our students. And then after they got into the groove, relearned again as the things, you know, has everything changed midway through the school year? Recognize our custodial staff and our DBW as a whole, getting their buildings ready to open on time and then keeping them compliant to remain open all year. Recognize our paraprofessionals, bus monitors, coaches, and any of our support staff. Crucial support they provide towards students and staff, which is obviously never more necessary than it was this year and likely never more difficult to provide that support than it was this year. I want to recognize for the resiliency and willingness to be on the front line of an uncharted epidemic tier as well as an uncharted educational pathway. Recognize our administrators for taking directives from the federal government, the state government, and this school committee and executing them. I want to recognize our nurses in our health department who, when someone was sick, it was from them because they were told to run away from them. These guys had to go, you know, actually go to them and help them out and then check up on them to make sure they're okay before they returned to school. I want to recognize our students and their families are staying masked, staying home when ill, washing their hands a million times a day, getting tested after travel, quarantining when necessary, with mid-year schedule changes and just keeping the whole thing together. And obviously, recognize anybody that I missed this school year that we were somehow able to pull off. You know, it was not easy and it was not perfect, but it was incredibly impressive and vitally important. And so just, you know, recognition to everybody who had hands in to help this group. You know, I remember, you know, a year ago where we were, what we were looking at and the fact that this farm pulled this off, really set the standard. They were sure of not the rest of the Commonwealth as far as what could have been done this year. Recognization, thank you. Sorry to have the time.
Thank you, Joel. Very well said. Laura.
I second everything Joel said. That wasn't what I was going to say, but absolutely. Much more short-term, I want to recognize the staff and students and administration and PTO of Beaman Memorial School who had field day in this incredible heat yesterday and today. Outside, it was almost 100 degrees and just giving the kids an opportunity to just be happy and light, and it was amazing. And it was so hard to keep it going and keep the kids hydrated and safe and healthy. And I just want to commend everyone at Beaman for a really extraordinary field day with gratitude.
Mayor Taken.
I just want a copy of what he said because I think he just gave us the speech that you and I, Jonathan, don't have to say Saturday. So, thank you, Joel. It's great, but the fact is right. We have principals. But I really want to thank the school committee, the budget team, because this has been, like Jonathan said last night, a city council, one of the most easiest ones ever. We put first our students and our staff. And this is the budget. And the only way that we could say thank you to everyone who participates in any kind of Gloucester Public Schools, no matter what their job is, whether it's on the city side or whether it's on the school side, was to do the budget, approve the budget, and go forward. So we know that in September, we're going to be able to also have a, you know, full staff going forward and some other things going forward. So thanks to the people who worked on the budget, too. So and all my principals who had to deal with a lot. And I want to say that because a lot of people don't know that in the beginning, and it's still going to happen, but in the beginning, I asked Ben, the principals, you know, the cost of living, the 2%, the principals all waited. They all waited. And they, I said, I really need some time here because we really don't know. We're all afraid. We don't know what's going to happen. You know, it was before the federal government said they were going to give us all this other extras. We were really hearing what the governor was saying and we weren't sure. And the fact is, I kept saying, I don't know what's going to happen. I really am frightened because we really don't know. Can we just wait right now till we know? And all the principals waited to get anything. They were already entitled per contract. But I says, in order to do that, this way, the city sideways and we'll see what we can do. So I want to thank you all because by doing that, it proved that we were a team and we really meant what's important is the whole city, all the citizens of Gloucester. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Well said. Kathy.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge James Cook and the group that put together a virtual presentation for next year called What Do Families Need Now? Helping Children and Parents as We Reemerge. This is a book, a presentation by Lynn Lyons, who is going to talk to people about anxiety, depression, worry, and how we kind of emerge from this time. And so I commend them. You know, the school year has been very busy in every way, but we now have yet another example of how we're here to support our children. And I see Amy Cam's name attached to James' email, so I can only imagine she's played her usual leadership role in this particular thing. So I hope parents take advantage of participating in that. I also wanted to acknowledge all of our teachers that are retiring. I don't know the exact number of how many are retiring, but we do thank them for their many, many years of service. They have clearly finished their career in one of the most difficult years. So hopefully, when they're done, they'll be like, oh, thank God, I'm done. But we do appreciate absolutely every, every bit of dedication and care of our students and the great education provided.
Thank you. Melissa.
Thank you, Kathy. That's a good segue. It's what I wanted to say. I want to recognize and congratulate Patty Wegman, our special ed director, on her retirement. I, this is probably one of her last meetings. And I was hoping she would be here because I haven't had the opportunity to see her. But I just want to say the work she has done for this district over the past many years has been tremendous. Talking to parents and having my own personal experiences, there's no doubt that our school has a very, very good reputation when it comes to special education and meeting the needs, the individual needs of all the kids, either through IEPs or special accommodations and all the other services that are provided. I'm sure some of you have heard horror stories in other districts where they've had to challenge a lot of the decisions. And in Gloucester, I've heard nothing but great things about our special ed department and how our kids are getting the attention that they need and the resources that they need. And a huge thanks to Patty Wegman for making that happen. We've gone through a lot over the years with special ed. When we had the audit, you know, the department pulled itself together. It came out shining and a huge nod to Patty and I wish her nothing but the best and happiness and whatever she chooses to do next after leaving our district. But thank you very much, Patty. There's much love for you in this community. You deserve it.
We all agree. Anyone else? I'd just like to mention the art teachers and music teachers and drama teachers that have put together with the aid of the Gloucester Education Foundation a virtual art exhibit, which you can access online. And it's, I was watching it just before the meeting started and it's really great. It's really worth, it's about, I don't know, 10 minutes and it's really worth looking at it. Just go to the Education Foundation website, I think, is the place to get there, right, Kathy? Okay, moving on. Oral communications. Is there anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject? Not on the agenda. I'm going to put my glasses on for this one. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to a proper subcommittee. For items on the agenda, maybe members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes and each, and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. That being said, do we have anybody who would like to speak at oral communications? And we have one, Cynthia McCowsky. Cynthia. We've got a promotion to a panelist. Cynthia, can you hear us? Yes, there you are. We can't hear you, though. You're muted.
I said, I might as well, since I didn't realize I was going to be on the video, I said, so I might as well let you see our gorgeous, beautiful harbor instead of just my beautiful face. But anyhow, I just wanted to say, thank you all for the work you've done over the year. I know it's challenging. I know that we often have disagreements with the, between the GTA and the school committee. The one thing I know is that we have strong relationships that we've built over the years, whether or not people come and go, and that we all are truly looking for the best entrance of students. And we know teachers care for your, care for our students, just like you, the parents, care for them. We are your second parents. Secondly, and I don't know if this is something I should bring up at the city council, because I know the budget's already done, but I'm thinking strongly, like especially after this year, how much work James Cook, our principal, has done. It's like unbelievable, James and his administrative team to keep the school going open and running and functional and in person for during this time, during COVID. And he really needs a vice principal. I know teachers don't usually ask for administrators. And I know that they, we cut out our last vocational, the person who led, you know, was in charge of our vocational program, which is thriving. But I know, like, James has 100 employees at least. Whereas, like, for example, the police department has 45 employees total around there. That includes the secretaries and everybody else. And they have an assistant police chief. And yet, our high school that has, you know, that number of employees and never mind school, kids with high social, emotional, academic, everything, all those needs, does not have an assistant principal to help him make this school run. Like, you will burn him out and he will, you know, knock on wood, something will happen to him. That guy's going to have a heart attack if he doesn't get adequate and decent help. And I know you all love him. So let's show that love by giving him either a raise or more likely a vice principal. And he did not pay me to say this. So thank you again.
Thank you, Cynthia. Unfortunately, I think I, Maria, I don't know how we get Cynthia off of the, as a participant. But we now have Mary Ann Boucher back again. Mary Ann, can you hear us? There you are. Mary Ann?
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
I'm Boucher, 93 Mile Pleasant Avenue. I just wanted to take this evening to recognize Greg Bach, Stacy Alexander, Amber Tels, Sophia Smith, Beth Goldberg, Heather Goolsbee, and Mrs. Brandsfield, who has been on Wednesday, first and second grade virtual field trips. And also, all of the representatives who have done the virtual field trips. My first grade and fourth grade granddaughters, who have spent the entire year with me for Remote Academy have thrived. And I want to thank each and every one of these people. My grandchildren were throwing a curveball, as well as many others in this district. And the Remote Academy, put together by Greg Bach and I don't know who else, but I just want to recognize all of them because it has been an incredible experience for my grandchildren. We all know that kids want to be in school, but when you're throwing this curveball and you have to make the best of it, these, all of these people, each and every one of them, went above and beyond as far as I am concerned. Life, instruction all day long, a first grader, a fourth grader, and I also have a five-year-old granddaughter who we hear all day. I think my five-year-old granddaughter is going to graduate first grade before she even enters kindergarten. I'm highly impressed and I want to thank each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak at oral communications? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to our student advisory council, which I believe Jenna Smith is our new representative. And would you like to introduce yourself and tell us what's going on?
So I'm Jenna Smith. I'm not the prince, the president. I'm the vice president of the executive board at GHS. Everyone else has a tennis match, so they couldn't really come and introduce themselves today. But I have a lot of information to rifle off at you. So to start, graduation is this Sunday. There's like limited guests, so the public can't really go, but that's the first thing. Since the senior classes here wasn't able to have a graduation day at stage four like they typically do, the junior student council is hosting, or at their graduation rehearsal on Friday. We are surprising them with pizza, cake, a little celebration after they actually do their rehearsal because the class has had a lot taken away from them. So why not give them something while we can? On the sports end of the school, today, the boys tennis team got the NEC championship title against Salem. So that's a victory. Tomorrow, the girls and the boys track team, which I am a part of, they're competing against Danvers at home at 4:00 for the NEC South title. So that's going to be big. That's going to be interesting. The lacrosse teams, boys and girls, baseball and softball. Right now, they don't have much going on, but their seasons are going to start to ramp up as playoffs start to come along. So right now, they're all just preparing for that. Student council elections have been moved to next fall instead of the spring. For my class, I've seen the junior class becoming seniors, our prom is almost, our prom is booked, our semi's booked. Everything's booked. I'm thinking that the tickets are going to be free for students since we haven't had any events. So our bank situation is looking pretty good right now. So we're set for that. Sophomore class for their shoe drive that they've been doing, they had a goal of 900 shoes, which they have successfully reached. So that's awesome. Free food locker. So this December, the free food locker started to deliver groceries to houses like around town and they're provided, provided the groceries from the open door. There was a total of 382 total orders and out of those 382, 309 of them went to houses of GHS students. So that is huge. Over the summer, students, like the free food locker isn't going to be open since they're not in school. So students can directly contact the open door, have groceries delivered right to their house. They can go to the open door, pick it up, whatever works for them. As Kathy Clancy said earlier, Lynn Lyons, she wrote that awesome book about, it's titled Anxious Kids, Anxious Parents, and it's about supporting kids with issues like anxiety, depression. And on June 15th, from 7:00 to 8:00 or 8:30, there's going to be virtual training for parents of students who are in sixth grade to 12th grade. Amy Cam has a lot more information. If you have any questions, you can contact her directly. So yeah, that's going to be an awesome resource for parents. The mental health ambassadors graduated students from the 75-hour gift training last week. Amy Cam and Rosie Gula met with the ambassadors today and they talked about priorities regarding like staff understanding about mental health challenges, suicide prevention. And staff is hopefully going to start getting trained about all those issues so that they can handle the students' mental health challenges. Because as the mayor was saying earlier, COVID has been really difficult for everyone and especially students because we haven't known if we're going to be in school, out of school, half and half. So a lot of people my age and younger and older, we've all been struggling with mental health things. So it's really great that the teachers and everyone, the whole staff of all Gloucester schools are going to start getting more educated, getting more training, and hopefully can help students along the way as they struggle with these things. Finally, Mila Barry, she graduated, she's graduating this year. She is the one going to Harvard. She is a big part of Art for Equity and they're having a, they're delivering books. She has all her books at her house. I don't know much information on that. I just know that they have made a lot of progress with the whole book drive and they're looking for NHS kids to help out, deliver them and bring them to wherever they need to go. And that's all I have. That was a lot, but thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a question? Okay, seeing none. Jenna, you're welcome to stay. We understand if you don't. Okay, so thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you again. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda anybody would like to remove for further discussion or or examination?
Will we include the consent agenda? Second.
Okay, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues. We have three topics tonight. And I will turn it over to Superintendent Lummis, who will take us through that until we get to item C, which I will, I will run, okay? You need to unmute.
Thank you. I was heading that way. I had it. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Chairman Pope. So just one, as I said before the meeting, this is our last school committee meeting of the school year. And as folks have said, obviously, so many people to thank, I won't thank everyone tonight in this way, but just do want to sort of, you know, take a moment to mark the significance of us getting through the school year, almost in terms of, you know, all the students and staff, obviously, but we're on the verge and I just can't thank folks enough for everyone's perseverance, everyone's imagination, everyone's innovation, and just people working together like I could not have imagined last summer when I first started, but then also when so many people at that point were working so hard just to see if we could open school for maybe two weeks or maybe three weeks at the most, you know, and to know that we have done what Amy Pasquarello and Talina Immel said. They said in August, we're going through the whole year and I frankly did not believe them. And I'm sure other folks said that as well, but it's a testament to folks resilience, to folks becoming more comfortable with the fact that we could, that they could do it, we could all do it, and then sticking to it. And I just think it's a huge credit to our staff, our students, our families, our school leaders, the school committee, but really, it's a testament to this community. I mean, Gloucester is like no place I know in terms of being resilient and practical and a place where folks support each other and get things done. So I'm just really, really grateful and I hope, I hope everyone knows that. So, so, and so on to, on to big things. We've done great things and we'll continue to do great things. And one thing about this time in schools is it's very much about transitions. You know, our seniors are graduating this weekend and folks are thinking about leaving, you know, the rush of the school year behind and and having a different pace for some or most of the summer. I hope all of us will find some time for fun and rejuvenation. It's also a time that staff move on to different positions within the district. They move away for a variety of reasons. They also retire. And we're also in the midst of the hiring season. So at this time of year, there are a lot of goodbyes and hello's. And tonight is a very good example of that. I'm going to start in a moment by acknowledging Patty Wegman, who is our departing special education director. And then after that, I'm going to introduce Catherine Provost, who I'm recommending tonight to be our next director of special education. So I know Patty's here. There she is, not just her lab, but first off, I want to say a few words about Patty. Patty has served in many capacities here in Gloucester. She was first hired in 1993, sorry Patty, to be special education classroom, teacher, special education teacher at Fuller. That was 28 years ago, which is pretty remarkable, I think. Patty then became a program leader at Vets at Fuller and then O'Malley. And she's been our very, very capable director of special education since 2012, 12. Now, I've only known Patty for one year of her 28 years of service, but wow, it's been quite a year. I've had to rely on many people this year, but I quickly learned that I could rely on Patty completely and in many ways. I saw her attention to detail. I saw how she deals with things quickly and proactively, which I really appreciate. And she also really always is making sure that we're doing right by our students and our families. All throughout this year, I could always trust Patty's good judgment and her vast experience. I also learned that many Um, I also learned, um, that many, many other people rely on Patty. Her teams have experienced incredible support from her over the years. Um, special education teachers, program leaders and others have said things like this to me again and again. I've always felt supported by Patty, she's always there for me, she's a rock. She knows so much, and indeed Patty does. Um, Patty knows about special education laws, regulations and process like I know the back of my hand. She knows teachers and the program leaders and the teams and the schools, because she's been working with them for so long in many, many different capacities. And then last, and perhaps most importantly, Patty knows her students and their families. She knows students' strengths and struggles, because in, in many examples, she's literally been working with them and their family since preschool. Or at least since they first came to our, our, our schools. That is just a tremendous advantage for our families and our students and our teachers to have that sort of wisdom and experience. Um, and it's gonna be sorely, sorely missed. All of that means that we could always count on Patty every single day. In the complex world of special, special education, always being able to count on the person who's leading our special education work is essential, it's, it cannot be counted how valuable it is. Um, so Patty, I wanna thank you and, and for a lot of people. Thank you for being essential to, to me and to so many people in so many ways over so many years. Um, I personally wish you all the best in your new endeavors outdoors and on islands and in faraway places, and I also, also hope close by as well. So, thank you Patty so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Patty. Want to continue Ben?
Yeah, so, so now I turn to the other side of this coin. And I'm welcoming and recommending Catherine Provost to begin, to become Gloucester's next dress director of special education. And, and Katie's here tonight, say hi Katie, say hi Katie.
Hello, everybody.
So let me tell folks a little bit about Patty and, and how we met her and, and what I see, so. Honestly, I wasn't sure how the director search was gonna go.
Uh, it's one of the Name is Catherine, you called her cat Patty again, Patty's retiring.
Sorry, Katie, Katie, not Patty, Katie. Um, I wasn't sure how the director search was gonna go, it's, it's one of the most challenging, important positions to, for any school district and it's not easy to fill. So, um, I wasn't sure, and I think the search committee wasn't sure how it was gonna go until Katie walked into the room. It's actually was a Zoom call, so it was more like popping up on a screen, but um, from Katie's resume, we knew that she had tremendous experience in special education. Uh, but very quickly to us, it was obvious to our team that Katie also had the mindset, the approach, the intellect, the determination and the warmth our team was looking for. Ultimately, through two interviews and numerous reference checks, it was very clear that we had found a remarkable and talented special education leader. One of the aspects I liked the most about Katie is that she's had almost every role in special education there is. She started as a paraprofessional for behaviorally and emotionally challenged students in a substantially separate program. And she became a teacher in special, in a special education collaborative, then a special education teacher in a school district, then a director of an integrated preschool program, and most recently a special education coordinator and assistant principal. I find it very, very important and very impressive that she has had every role in special education that she will be supporting. Katie also has a deep understanding of the multi-tiered system of supports we have been, we have been integrating across the district. She's a firm advocate for how tier one, tier two and tier three instruction and supports must all work together to make sure we support all of our students. And during the process, the interview process, she gave us numerous examples of how we can support our paraprofessionals with ongoing paraprofessional development. She sees the big picture, but can also really work one-on-one and, and very closely on the details. Um, she's also worked alongside and been trained by some of the very best people in the state and, and the national special, special education world. And then just as importantly, Katie is a connector. She will build lasting relationships to support our staff and she will connect with families and students to help them navigate the often complicated world of special education. Katie will begin her transition later this month by working alongside Patty for about four days, including being on site um, at our extended, extended year program. She'll also participate in, in Accept Collaborative Special Education Administrators Institute, which is a year-long leadership institute for directors. Please welcome Katie Provost, she and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Welcome Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, does anybody have, uh, any questions?
Hey Katie.
Hi Melissa.
Welcome to Gloucester.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you're not from Gloucester, so I'm, I'm curious to know what the draw was to come here. Was it a beautiful city or was it just the application for employment?
Well, there was a lot of reasons. Um, one is I live in Beverly and one of my favorite places to go is Good Harbor Beach, so I absolutely love Gloucester, the city of Gloucester. Um, but more than just loving the city of Gloucester for its beauty and the ocean and the beaches. Um, I've been looking to pursue, um, and kind of move up the path for a direct, eventually become a director of special education. Um, and seeing this opening, I decided to pursue it. And then really learning more about the Gloucester community, the Gloucester Public Schools. Um, that welcome that Ben just gave me, I'm, I'm so overwhelmed hearing how wonderful Patty is and, and being able to kind of move into that, that role, I, I'm very overwhelmed and very excited at the same time. Um, it's a very quick commute for me from Beverly, so, um, but I've just, I'm very, very excited.
Very excited too, you have big shoes to fill, but
I know.
Thank you Katie.
Thank you.
Excuse me, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion that we, um, appoint, uh, approve the appointment of Catherine Provost as um, uh, director of special education for the Gloucester Public School System.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes. Hold on.
Okay.
Even though I didn't have any discussions, um, or any questions, um, I did check out Catherine, uh, cause I don't wanna say Katie, Patty, whatever Catherine out. Um, and I'm sure that she's just too embarrassed to say, actually she's joining because she loves the mayor, but that's another topic, no. Um, but the fact is that very good credentials and very good, um, references and, um, I did talk to people in Beverly, in Beverly School Systems and all around and to see who, if, who Catherine was, you know, you hear Provost, there's a lot of Provosts in Gloucester, we all related. And, um, because, you know what? Um, yes, Patty, I, I don't wanna say her age either or how long she's been with us, but I mean, I've been Patty's friend and I've been Patty's enemy. Um, as an advocate for special needs and, and back then when I was at, um, actually at the Fisherman's Wives, that's how, wow. Um, doing advocacy for translation for the Italian and Sicilian community to explain to some of the parents of, you know, this is what's happening in the schools and what we can do and, you know, before actually special needs was called special needs and, and we had, uh, sometimes they even separated the children, if you remember back then, they actually separated children that had some special needs. So we go way back and, you know, Patty, sometimes they will say, well, she's not defending me, she's not doing this and, and in all fairness, I would say Patty, you know, you just don't understand and we go ahead and Patty would say, you know, I would love to do all of that and it has nothing to do with money, it has to do with the state demands and until I actually became a politician on this side and city council and then as mayor and looking everything, you realize that, you know what, it's not to save money. Um, and it's not, you know, to classify students or children or, or not to help and, and I, I hear the aggravation. It's what the state keeps demanding from us, what we have to do and the limitations that we can. So, um, you know, and so in all fairness Patty, I wanna say congratulations on your retirement, enjoy life. Then I wanna apologize for being, you know, whatever beforehand, um, not understanding the whole process and advocating, because that's what we do. We like to scream when we advocate and we'd like to actually defend. And you defended our children very well, I just wanted to let you know that from the bottom of my heart. Catherine, be careful, cause now I am mayor and, you know, sometimes they didn't say I'm hostile, but I don't know, but the fact is when it comes to special needs and children, um, they're very dear and near to my heart, it's very difficult and we're coming up with a lot and that's what I advocated for new school. And I'll tell everyone here that there are so many different things and I got the approval today and I'm sure you all saw it, Jonathan, you saw it, where they're allowing us to do, you know, um, special classroom and special things for the, um, designs for special needs and I am so like thrilled people. Um, that's amazing, so I look forward to working with you. So welcome to Gloucester, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other, um, questions or debate, we have a motion on the floor, Kathy?
I just wanted to say welcome, it's nice to meet you and hopefully in person soon.
Nice to meet you too Kathy.
Okay. Well, that being said, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously and, uh, Patty, um, thank you for all the work you've done over the years, um, we, uh, we will miss you. Um, and, uh, but I, we, we, we know how to find you too, so, um, you know, and we're looking forward to, uh, seeing what you do with the rest of your life, I'm sure it'll be exciting. Thank you. Um, okay, now for the main feature of the evening, uh, the, um, school improvement plans, um, K through eight.
Great, uh, thank you, um, community members, first of all, for the appointment of, of Katie. Um, Katie, you are, we will put you to work in short order, but you are welcome, welcome to sign off and, and go do other things on this nice warm summer evening. Great to see you.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone, I'm thrilled to be joining the Gloucester community and the Gloucester team.
Welcome.
All soon.
Thank you, great, so I'm gonna hand it off to, uh, the five families, our elementary school principals and to help us, uh, go through um, and lead, um, uh, just go through their school improvement plans for, or the school improvement plan for the, um, for next year. Um, Maria, could, could Amy have, um, sharing privileges please?
Sure, hang on one second.
Thank you. And Amy, are you MC or is one of the other?
Uh, we're all taking a turn, I will run the slideshow, but Matt's gonna start us off.
Okay, great.
You should be outside Amy.
Alright.
Alright, great, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna do an introduction and, uh, then the other principals are going to, uh, to explain a little more in depth about these, these plans. So I am extremely honored to do the introduction to the improvement plans of the five elementary schools. As this is the last school committee meeting of the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, I think it is a fitting time for us to both look back and to look forward as we conclude this amazing year. A little over a year ago, on March fifteenth, twenty twenty, the five elementary school principals, Greg Bach stared at each other over our first Zoom meeting ever and wondered what exactly was going on, how long this would last and how we were going to keep students learning. That lasted only for a few minutes and the six of us got down to work and within the span of three hours mapped out a two-week plan that involved curriculum, technology access for staff and students, communication for families and even food. Each of us went back to our amazing faculties and staffs and got to work successfully, completing three months of remote work. After those scary and unpredictable early days, we are before you on the cusp of completing one hundred seventy days of in-person learning at the elementary schools. The creation of a remote academy, a sixth elementary school, the setting up of a one-to-one Chromebook initiative for our third, fourth and fifth graders and countless other new and innovative ideas that range from trying out new school hours to being able to eat lunch safely. On more than one occasion, I've thrown up my hands, thought that we finally have hit the wall. This next hurdle cannot be overcome. It was in these moments that my colleagues in central office, IT fellow principals, our staffs and our amazing nurses stepped up with incredible ideas, out-of-the-box thinking and mind-blowing work ethics that made this all come together. I'm sure my fellow principals will agree that this type of achievement does not occur in a vacuum. None of this could have happened without the work of an entire team led by Ben, Greg and Patty, who set a course with the simple mission to get as many students into school safely for as many days as possible. Can't tell you how much I relied on my four fellow principals who picked me up when I faltered and I can only hope that I was able to do the same for you, I thank you all. We have learned so much over the last year and a half. And as we begin to look back, we are sure that more lessons will be unpacked. The goals that you will see tonight are a reflection of some of this work. And we believe that the Gloucester Public Schools are going to emerge from this pandemic stronger than ever. So presenting our first goal will be Amy Pasquarello.
Thank you Matt. So our first goal is to look at, um, our core curriculum. We reinvented everything this year, as Matt mentioned. Um, and we're just hoping to do the best we could for everybody as most students we could. Um, so in the meantime, we had stu, teachers that were piloting a new math program or an updated math program that we hope to implement next year, so that will be part of our core instruction that we are going to focus on next year. We're also going to take a look at our literacy program and pilot a few of, a few different choices for that to kind of bring us into a more, um, modern version of a literacy program with culturally proficient uh, stories and so forth and resources. We will be implementing a dyslexia screener for kindergartners, so we will identify students in need earlier, so we can get intervention started as soon as possible. Um, we will continue with our three data meetings a year. Um, I wanna note something about the data meetings, I know we are all having our end of year data meetings around now and something that is just mind-blowing to me is the proficiency and growth that we are seeing, I believe in all of the uh, uh, grade levels or elementary for sure. It, the level of growth is more than a typical year. We are getting, our scores are higher than they've been before. Our gross student growth percentage is higher than it has been before. All students at all levels are removing students from red to yellow, from yellow to green. We now have a new blue, which exceeds, um, expectation that our students are entering. The amount of proficiency that our students have gained this year is remarkable in our shortened days and, um, our teachers just in our data meetings are in awe of what they've done and they have, they've been, done a tremendous job. So we do wanna keep that because it's a huge source of pride and celebration. Um, we will continue with targeted intervention and progress monitoring, which will lead to small groups. Our small groups this year have been really small groups. They've been virtual or they've been one-on-one, sometimes two-on-one because of the COVID restrictions. So we are welcoming the idea to get some more social learning back into the classrooms. We're gonna bring more cooperative learning back into the classrooms and target those interventions. Um, we will use common planning time to collaborate, uh, to make all of these plans. So we're going to look first at our core instruction, we are going to continue with our tier two and tier three instructions that we really target those students in need. Um, and we're gonna keep going with the progress that we've made this year, because really with half-days, um, in person, it has been remarkable how far we've come. And our next goal will be presented by Dan Jewitt.
Hi everybody, it's nice to see you. Um, uh, if anything, uh, the, the year taught us is that every day matters and we saw that in, uh, uh, individual students and the collective hall, and so our second goal is really to, um, have a real concentration on absenteeism, uh, chronic absenteeism in particular. But again, getting all of our students in school as much as possible and, um, that's going to start with partnering with an organization called Attendance Works, which we will start to do some work this summer with. And, uh, they'll help us review our policies and our outreach documents and, uh, help with some professional development here with the leadership team and others. Uh, and from there, uh, the goal is really to increase our communication district-wide, um, and have a tailored message then also to individuals and families as we work to engage families and really understand uh, the causes of absenteeism. It, it, there's a range of reasons and causes and we want to identify those causes and work with families um, to, to decrease absenteeism and, and get school, kids in school. Um, and, uh, learning, day in and day out. Um, and that's going, uh, part of that work will be in terms of besides the, uh, increasing communication um, and expectations, uh, around attendance. It's also really about monitoring and building school-wide teams, attendance teams to continuously look at this, analyze the data and do outreach. Uh, part of that is, um, we, we've started to work with a program called Kinvo, which allows us to text message families in real time and engage them on, on the way most people communicate these days. And it also allows us to have immediate translation between various languages to make sure that we're engaging people in their native language and again, really focusing on partnering with families to get kids in school.
Next up, I think we have, is it Talina or Jody or both?
Both. I'm going to start us off. Good evening, everybody. So for our third goal next year, we really want to prioritize social-emotional needs of our students and increase our tier-two and three intervention work with the, with the hopes of increasing our social, emotional, mental, and physical health for our most vulnerable students. I think it is not lost on any of us that this has been a very unique and challenging year and has definitely provided many different experiences for our students, whether it be homeschooling, remote learning. We've had to shuffle students around and have them attend schools that weren't necessarily in their home district to make sure that they could get the in-person learning that they were requesting. We know several of our students had opted for private-type programs that they enrolled in for the year. And so ideally, those folks are all kind of coming back to blend together again next year. And so we want to be really intentional about the work that we do to continue to build our cultures in our school and on, and the community within our school, and to make sure that we're sort of acknowledging those experiences and reintegrating all of our students back into in-person learning. And to do that, we plan to prioritize social skills groups with the help of our counselors. We want to reintroduce the idea of cooperative learning through projects and inquiry-based type learning. And that's in an effort to also challenge our students that are above and beyond and make sure that we are supporting them as well and expanding their learning. We want to make sure that we're explicitly teaching the expectations of what we are looking for in various locations of school, whether it be how we're walking down the hallway, how we're presenting ourselves as students that are ready to learn and to listen, whether that be in an assembly or in a classroom. You know, expectations on the playground. Some, some students haven't experienced those things for over a year and a half. So it's really important to be very intentional with that. We have begun to do some of that work with the help of GEF that sponsored Gnomegram and some of the mindful toolkits that they supported us with this year. And I believe that we'll continue to expand on that and use things like that for next year to help our students as we also explore supporting social, emotional curriculum with other ideas. We do have our Second Steps program, but things like those, that mindful toolkit that many of us used and found a great resource this year will be things that we can add on. We want to make sure that we're looking into some appropriate program that's developmentally appropriate at the elementary school level to address substance abuse prevention and, and internet safety. This pandemic has, has been challenging to our city, and we're seeing a rise in issues in both those areas in students as young as elementary school. So it's important to get in there and be very proactive and talk to people early so that we can put some good stopgaps in so that we don't get to a point where we're faced with really critical issues for our students. Alina would like to add?
Thank you. Covered it all. I'm, you know, I just have to concur with the rest of my team that it's been an amazing year for seeing what our staff can rise to the occasion and do. We have a ton of really great work happening in our schools. We had great work happening before COVID came, and we would like to return to those practices in the area of social and emotional needs. If you look at those three on the right-hand side, we're really looking at that upper elementary and the changes that we're seeing there. Second Step is really meeting the K to two needs, but we're seeing areas where we need to go more deeply for our third, fourth, and fifth graders. So that's our hope in the next year.
And that's the end of our presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the committee? Samantha?
Thank you. Could you guys just elaborate on the tiers a little bit more? Sort of explain what you mean by tier one, tier two?
Alright, I'll start. So tier one is the core instruction, so that's the baseline of what every child gets. So, so an introduction to a math lesson would be the core instruction. So that's a lesson that is for every student. Then there's students that might need more repetition or practice, or might need it taught in a little, in a slower manner or in a different delivery, and that's, they used to call it RTI groups, or sometimes it's MTSS, the multi-tiered system. And that's where they would get it either a second time, or in a small group, or by a paraprofessional with a different intervention program, depending on what the need is. And tier three tends to be more specialized instruction. That is going to be that deeper instruction. Oftentimes, it's the special education teachers providing that. And so what the important work we have to do is to make sure that all of those tiers support each other. So if our core instruction is teaching math in one particular way, you don't want the tier-two or tier-three to use completely different language or come from a different angle. We want to just reinforce and, and have a deeper knowledge of the skills versus confusing children with different types of languages or approaches. So it's important that we streamline all of the tiers.
And just to piggyback on what Amy said, that core instruction is, that includes the center work in the classroom, that includes teacher table time, any, anything that all of the kids get, that would be considered core instruction.
Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you. Firstly, I mean, what a year, and just amazing, principals, amazing. It's quite striking that the data meetings have shown that the kids have advanced more than in a normal year. And I'm really wondering what, what do we take from that? You know, we, we had great plans in place and great, great teaching happening, and somehow this year with shorter days, you know, like, it seems like there's some learning there. And I'm wondering what, you know, it may be hard to tease out, but I'm wondering where you're, what you're finding.
My staff has come down, I'm sorry, Jody. My staff has come down to one word is urgency. Teachers had a sense of urgency. They had four hours. They had to get these, these students where they needed to be. They had felt that they had to fill gaps. And they taught. They came in and they taught their hearts out. I mean, they, they repeated instruction. They got found where the kids were. They met them where they were, and they just were amazing. The, the focus entirely was on learning. Jody, I'm sorry, interrupted.
No, I, I 100% agree with Amy. We've begun to have a lot of these conversations with staff. And, you know, in the early days when it was the half-day and it was four hours, I mean, we were in and we were right at it with instruction from the minute that that bell rang at 8:00 AM or 8:45, depending on where you go to school, until, you know, the four hours was up, and there, and there was minimal distractions. You know, we were trying to be safe and keep everybody in their bubble, so students really weren't moving around to do a lot of things. And I think that that's an important lesson learned. Well, a school is many things for a student, and it's not only academic because there's many things to be learned at school. I think that we need to be really creative about the way that we set up our programming in school and really try to stay close to strong academic blocks that do not have interruptions for other things and find other times within our day to address social, emotional needs, exercise, assemblies, enrichment, and all the things that make us, you know, school wonderful and need to be there. But I think that we need to kind of not mix it up so much in those academic blocks and, and stay true to really that core teaching and focus on the academics in that time period.
That's great. Thank you. I mean, I know that you're looking for lessons learned, and I know this is going to continue for years, but I mean, it's quite, that's quite striking. That's quite, quite striking and impressive. So thank you.
I would just add that the shorter day really allowed grade-level teams to collaborate with each other around lesson planning, utilizing seesaw to really develop targeted and differentiated assignments that they could assign to students to practice that skill taught was really powerful for many students. They could hear their teacher, and then they could record their voice. So all of those tools that we had the opportunity to learn and put into use this year really went a long way for our students.
Samantha?
Kathy, I had, I had a question specifically about that particular topic. Is it okay, Kathy? Um, do you, did you guys find that having sort of learning, learning mostly in the morning is sort of beneficial for this age group? I'm just sort of curious. Like, if you think about little kids and just sort of their attention spans and getting tired at the end of the day, is that something that you guys are thinking a little bit about?
Yeah, I think we're all going to try and start looking at our schedules. We've talked about this numerous times. But the morning has really, we've always kind of known it, but the morning, that sort of power teaching from the minute they got in until, until they, they left us was we really found that the kids were, were very attentive and able to judge us. So yes.
Kathy?
My question has to do with the attendance efforts. And I know we've talked kind of about this topic and how the community can help reinforce the importance of school. I mean, I was one of those that just loved school, and I couldn't imagine what else I would want to do on a day unless it was a snow day. But I know there are a lot of kids who are not, who may not have that same particular approach. But how do we engage the community as a whole in terms of, you know, stressing that school is not only important, but it's really cool for so many other reasons. Your friends are there, your, you know, recess is hopefully fun, and so how can we, as you work through this with your, you know, with the partner, please keep in mind, how can the community support this, and how can we get a leadership group of parents possibly helping with this as well? So that's not really a question, but it's just, I think it's a bigger thing. I've always envisioned that billboard over by Domino's with some really cool message about going to school. So maybe we can figure out how to fund something like that, so that there really is a commitment from the community for our kids.
Yeah, I agree, Kathy. It, the, we do need a community. We need community backing. Attendance issues are, happen for just a variety of reasons, so many reasons. And as all the principals know that, know that, but what we're finding is that there's different, there can be different cultural expectations about going to school. There can be medical issues. So, you know, it's, it's going to take a concerted effort, like you said, from church groups, community members, doctors' offices, things like that, that we really need some help with. So yes, I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay, any other questions? Melissa?
Thank you. So my question or comments regarding the third goal, which I think was slide three, about the social, emotional. So social, emotional is the huge buzzword internationally. You know, we're all very concerned about what the challenges the children have gone through over the past year. And I found it very interesting that you're doing a lot of research into the particular topics like substance abuse and anxiety and things like that. So I don't know if this is really a question or more of a request, but similar to what Kathy was saying about attendance, the social and emotional well-being of our children is a community topic. I mean, just addressing it in school doesn't help the parents at home. It doesn't help the community understand about the, the struggles of many families in this community, whether it be from domestic abuse, substance abuse, loss of income. The, the list is just endless, and it, and from my position and where I work on a daily basis, I've seen a lot of harm to this community that this pandemic has caused in other ways besides just getting the virus. So I guess my ask is that once you start doing this research and start implementing conversations and, and processes based on that research, if you could come to the school committee and tell us what you're doing, what we as a community can do to help, you know, what other resources are needed that maybe we can get people to come into the conversation from the community, the experts and things like that, because this really is a, a community effort to, you know, teach the child, teach the whole child, you know, takes a village, as they say, and this issue is just not, not just a school issue. So, and it's on everyone's mind. It's at the top of everyone's mind. So I just hope that by October and November, we can at least get an update on what's going on with that goal so that the committee as a whole can watch it grow and see, see the results of what, what implementations are being put into the school regarding social, emotional. It's just such a large topic. I mean, I don't think I know many children that don't have anxiety right now. It's like, that's another buzzword, and it just seems like we really need to stay focused on that, because once we have the kids feeling good about themselves, then the education's going to follow. So I just hope that we can get some sort of report in the fall. I know, I don't want to push and put pressure, but it would just be great to hear what's going to be implemented on that goal. Thank you.
Laura?
Um, yeah, just a small piece related to that, related to the internet, because I think you mentioned, Jody, that you're seeing, I mean, more kids have been online, of course, at younger ages. And it's, you know, it's, it's a black hole once you're on your computer. So I think, you know, part of that, and I'm sure this is already on your radar, would be teaching parents how to restrict. You know, how to, how to monitor and restrict, because when the kids are on doing their homework or doing their seesaw or doing, you know, it's, it's an easy path off. And I know you know that, but I think, I think working with parents to sort of inform and educate them about how to, how to handle that would be an important piece.
Any other questions or comments? Kathy?
Um, yeah, I just have a follow-up question, a comment on Laura's line of, of thought. A few years ago, we had a really good speaker come for middle and high school in terms of social media and, and all that. And so it's great that there are people out there that we could bring in for parents, and now with Zoom, you know, maybe that's a way to do kind of a in-person, but also allowing people to, to dial in. So maybe that's one of the things we can think about as part of this overall approach at, at various grade levels.
For the internet safety, we already have feelers out for people to come, and they would reach out to students and to families.
Yeah.
That is definitely the direction we're going in.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all very much, and you've got your work cut out for you. But we, after watching this year, we know you work hard. We know you work really hard. So we have all the confidence in the world that all of these plans are achievable, and you're the people that are going to do it for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. If the elementary principals could stick around to support Lynn, that'd be great. If you have to go, I'd not ask you earlier, I understand. But she, she unfortunately are, Lynn and James Cook, they, while they have teams in their buildings, they don't have the colleagues and compatriots of other principals. So, which is, which does make their job challenging in a different way. So, but Principal Lynn Beatty's here to, to share with you the improvement plan for her mainly.
Alright, thanks for having me.
Lynn, do you want me to present? Or you, or you?
That would be fabulous if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, I can.
I don't have to stumble over the slide changes. That'd be great.
Yep, give me a moment here while I stumble over.
Well, Ben's getting me set up. I just want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues at Elementary shared. There are many times when I think about, especially as we approach. There are many times when I think about, especially as we approach the end of this year. I'm in so much awe of everything that we accomplished. You know, it really was a Herculean task and I can't say enough about my staff and how they jumped in. We did two completely different schedules, nothing like we usually do this year. You know, building the, the first one quickly and the second one literally on the fly while the plane was in motion. People adapted, they were flexible, they, they were very thoughtful, thoughtful about how they approached and supported kids. And it's just, you know, it's incredible to look back on almost complete school year and and just think about how people put themselves out there. It's, it is a credit to our community, the Gloucester community. And the dedication and the support, the, the thank yous that have come from members of the community about what we've all accomplished at all levels. That doesn't happen in other communities this way. So it really is a privilege to be here and to be part of this and to think, wow, we, we really did this. We had our, our kids in school all year long. And, and I hopefully our kids are fortunate because of that. I do think they are. So.
Lynn, Lynn, can I just inter, I want to inject one thing to build on to what you said. And I hope you'll talk about this tonight. In last July, and I'd known Lynn for about two weeks at that point, okay? But she was working very hard with her team on the schedule. She's just building the schedule and knew that it'd be very complicated. And, and, and one of her first drafts was a schedule that as they looked through a bunch of things and looked through the complexity of doing, you know, work, doing O'Malley. They came back with a schedule which was, which is pretty good, you know, it was, it was, but it was, it was similar in many ways to what they'd done before. And that was because they really were hamstrung by all the limitations. And I simply said, said to Lynn, said, well, but you had shared an idea earlier that was better than all this. I think you want to do. Go try that again. Okay. That's all I said. And she pulled her team closer and literally within like a week had come back with what ultimately became the middle school schedule, which, which was, you know, 12 kids in a classroom, which I think is honestly, it, it borderlines, borderline, it's borderline revolutionary for middle school. And something that we won't forget soon, I think, want to see how we can get closer back to that. But it just, the, the reason I tell the story is, is because Lynn kept on doing that with her and her team. Someone would come up with an idea or Desi would come up with an idea or, and this, this one example, I came up with a small idea. And just asked a question and then they went to it and they went to it again and again. And never ceased to amaze me, I think, because, and also never ceased to work hard for the children and the students at O'Malley. And so thank you Lynn for always getting at it and doing it with such determination and just like, no nonsense comes, comes to mind for me, just no nonsense. So thank you so much. And I'll put up the presentation here and we can get moving.
Okay, so, um, as you're all aware, we are in the system of sustainable support with the Department of Education. So our plan is a, is a combination sustainable improvement plan, school improvement plan. Same initial, different words. So if you could go in, I just, I want to thank our team. This is our, our instructional leadership team who specifically convened last year to work on doing the research, facilitating all of that, coming up with the first year of the plan. And all but one of them was on the first year and everyone came back to the second year in addition to, to another member. So we've had some incredible opportunities to work together and really think about what's working, what, what we can improve and grow with. So I do want to give a big shout out to them. So the, the thing that, that we focused on as we got together as an instructional leadership team and then passed the information on to staff for feedback as to what we were thinking. The message was all about recovery. So we're coming out of this pandemic. Everyone worked incredibly hard this year, students, staff, families. And, you know, we made some growth. I don't have my spring scores yet, but even at mid-year, our median student growth percentile had already had passed the expected level. We have a new tool we're measuring with, but, but that was really incredible to see. And hopefully our spring data will show even more. But it's, it's really about, you know, the emotional turmoil of all of this and really thinking for all of us how to balance the urgency of what our students need for growth with the realization that we don't necessarily even fully understand the impact of the pandemic yet. We're starting to have conversations about kids and, you know, what they're feeling around, you know, being worried all the time that tomorrow, everything could change again. So, you know, you can see lots of joy and excitement on their face that they're getting to be together outside without masks and be closer together. And be in larger groups in class and talk to each other. But, you know, there's this sort of foreboding feeling they're not, that none of us are settled into yet. Is it really going to continue to get better? So we're gonna talk a little bit about, I've got four goals, high leverage goals that are, that are in our plan from last year that will be continued. And they fall under four categories. They're called turnaround practices, similar to the high schools work. And we have a number of actions that we will be taking and I'll talk a little bit about our accomplishments this year as I go through. So Ben, I'll, I'll read each of these when we get to the slides so you can move forward. So the first one is about leadership, shared responsibility and professional collaboration. And, and we found that we need to focus on clear, shared mission, vision, core values, oversight, accountability and support. So there are a few different things that we spent a lot of time on this year very well. And as one of the members of our community stakeholders committee said when we convened a very short time ago, that it's amazing that we accomplished anything in this year. So we're really proud of what we did do. We spent a lot of time on our core values, which, you know, maybe no surprise to you or anyone else came out to be sales again. However, with a different perspective, our sales values are now going to incorporate not just community and citizenship, but also academic excellence. Those, so the staff worked, evolved over time. And then we put it before all of our students who also contributed and thought about the values that we have of service acceptance, integrity, leadership and success. And what each of those values means with relation to academic excellence. So in the fall, kids will come back. We'll, we'll have them create new pledges from that perspective and we'll be really looking at everything we do through those core values, including aligning the mission and vision statements to make sure that they are a match. The other thing that we did incredibly effectively as at a start is we implemented a PLC model for our student review teams. This is the first time in, I think, more than a decade that these teams have run in a protocol focused on a student, focused on impacts to them from instruction, the curriculum, the environment, and also what the learner brings. Created intervention plans, followed a cycle and checked back on students. So that is something we will continue. And we'll bring into our curriculum team meetings, our grade level meetings, et cetera. And then finally, one of the things we'll be doing next year is really looking at, as we revisit the innovation plan and continue the sustainable improvement plan, there are quite a number of common goals and actions within those two plans. So, you know, monitoring and evaluating those initiatives. Making sure that they're completely in alignment and, and moving forward with innovation and sustained growth. The second practice is, is relating to intentional practices for improving instruction. So we want to make sure that we have a cohesive instructional focus in school-wide implementation of effective practices. So we are, and I want, I want to thank all of you for supporting our, our new middle school curriculum instruction coordinator, who hopefully will be, you know, all signed, sealed and delivered very shortly. And she and I, and our team will be focused with our staff on really bringing to fruition and even a deeper level, some of the things that we've started working on. So the, the key components that we have continued this year, working on universal design for learning. Bringing, we had training and we had workshops and, you know, continued to implement practices with that model to ensure access for all kids. And this is, this is a model that's very aligned with cultural proficient teaching, as well as providing access for kids on, on various social emotional levels. Our focus, we know that we need is hugely related to literacy. So a literacy team, we chose not to form this year, will be formed next year. And it will focus on a variety of things, you know, related to curriculum review, common writing rubrics, common, common assessments and bringing writing into all the subjects. Our Dennis Hurley, one of our assistant principals ran a workshop for teachers for half of our staff this year on, on writing across the curriculum. He's a former English teacher. And that gave us a start on it, but we'll continue growth into that area. The, the other piece that's going to be really important for us is increased administrative presence and feedback. So also that's going to be a critical goal as we come back into the year again with, with an additional administrator to help us really give good feedback and targeted feedback related to universal design for learning, related to the district accommodation plan and related to the instructional practices that we bring into place around literacy. And we'll do that both by observation feedback and also by together as a faculty, looking at student work together and continuing our PLC work so that we're being efficient and streamlined about that. The third turnaround practice and our goal relates to specific supports and instruction for all students and we want to increase our common summative informative assessments and make sure that we've got progress monitoring in place. So we're doing the cycle of assessing whether it's a quick hit assessment in a formative way or a more formal summative assessment for a unit and using that information to inform what we do next. This year, we had a great deal of success with Star 360 in reading and math. It was a tool that we brought in first time this year and teachers were immediately able to go right to which standards kids were struggling with, creating lesson plans to help them intervene and provide remediation for kids who were struggling. There's also opportunity to use information to extend learning for students who are at the other end of the spectrum. So that's a tool that we're looking forward to continuing to use. Common writing rubrics across all subjects are going to be important for us and, and talking as a full faculty about what literacy looks like in, in every subject, not just in ELA or indoor social studies. So this, this all fits into the different targeted practices that we're going to be continuing to grow with and using our PLC format in different places and building towards what we hope is a formal articulated, multi-tiered systems of support plan based on all the data we collect and the, the practices that we implement. And then finally, we've got turnaround practice four, which is leadership, shared responsibility and professional collaboration. This is the place where we really focus on, on our school climate, culture, how we involve kids in what we do and, and the collaboration amongst not just, not just staff, but also with students. So, you know, in the, the very bare bones, practical application is a school-wide referral form that's quick and easy to use so that we're constantly collecting data that we can look at together as a faculty related to student actions, behaviors, how they're, how they're working through our system and what, what we need for response. But then, as, as we know, where I said earlier, all of these, the goals that we've put in place are incremental steps connected to what we've done before, not throwing a lot of new pieces in place. What's going to be important for us is to, to go back and review things like our trauma sensitive practices. Really emphasizing restorative responses to, to conflicts. Jeff and Dennis and I and our admin team, all three of us approach kids with, you know, first the mediation, the, the restorative response, the, you know, repair to the community. We try not to go punitive at first, as much as we can avoid that. And we want that to happen in our house teams as well. It already does, but just more systematically. And, and make sure that that's always our focus is to help kids understand how their actions impact the community and, and what they do to make that right. We want houses to, to have opportunities to build, get together so that they can do some positive community and team building tasks with kids and not just academic gathering, not just preparation for a field trip gathering, but, but real, you know, team building actions. Some of our teachers did some incredible things today. The sixth grade has been having kayak races where the team of kids pulls each other across the field in a kayak. And it's, it's incredible to watch. They, they, they have, you know, great excitement in teams and cheering each other on regardless of which house they're in. It's a very healthy competition, which is great. And lastly, as I mentioned before on this, the universal design for learning and culture responsive teaching merges together very nicely to make sure that we're always focused on what our kids need and providing different opportunities for access so that they can do the learning that they need to do. And that's it for me.
Okay, any questions? Kathy.
Lynn, can you describe a little more in detail of the curriculum? Person that's coming in to, to work with you.
To the role? Yeah. So the, the idea is for the person to partner with my administrative team, but with the focus of, you know, not doing the whole school assistant principal role where it's, you know, there's discipline and there's, you know, student review team and cafeteria stuff and building stuff and all that kind of thing. Her focus will be deliberately on instruction. So it will be the facilitation of, of a number of different teams that are already together, working with our, our program leaders, taking a look at our curriculum, scope and sequence maps. Helping to facilitate a curriculum review in English language arts to start the writing across the curriculum and literacy across the curriculum piece. So it'll be a lot of looking at what frameworks we have in place, building teams to review what we're doing and grow and add evidence-based practices that we're going to focus on together as a school. The person will also be doing evaluation. So it's a, a kind of a combination evaluation and coaching role. So she'll be in classrooms a lot along with me and, and Jeff and Dennis and taking a look at the instructional practices that we've determined to be the ones we want to see and helping give teachers feedback, being available to support them in their practice and, and how they're working to help our kids grow.
Thank you.
Laura.
Thank you. Um, thank you Lynn. So just again, you know, you know, just you know, amazing work by all the teachers and staff in all of our schools. Ben had referenced the schedule that you had been able to, your miraculous schedule that had allowed 12 students in a class. I know that that's, you know, that's, that's not an easy thing to attain and that's not the goal for next year. But do you see that as being, as, as something that would be possible or moving towards something like that? As, you know, we've learned these lessons from COVID. Just wondering if that's really a feasible, a feasible goal for the, for the middle school.
Um, the way we had it set up is not a sustainable model. However, I can't tell you when I, you know, worked with the staff at O'Malley and asked the questions about what did you find valuable? What would you want to keep? What, what best supported you? There were many, many responses where, you know, I really wish we could keep smaller classes. I know it's expensive and I know we'll never be able to do it, but I really wish we could. So one of the things that we will do as we, we continue forward with, with some of these plans and, and changes in curriculum and instruction, what we want to marry in there is also looking at how we could potentially do something like that. Whether it's rearranging staff, whether it's, you know, ideally adding additional staff if needed. We want to be creative about it. We want to be thoughtful about it and we want to, you know, make sure that we don't jump the gun in terms of, you know, we want to know what we're doing, right? So, so which practices are going to work for us? And then the personnel to support and, and layer on top of that. You know, a good start for us, we have a literacy intervention teacher coming in, we have this, the instructional coordinator coming in. So those are two really helpful layers for us that will help us both, you know, start to put some things in place and give us information about what's most effective and working so that we can know what to plan forward for.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Principal Beatty. And, you know, we, we're, we are looking to support you in any way we can. We've, we've done what we could for this year and we know that what the work you're doing is very important and that, you know, we, we want to support that. We, we want to move that school forward as best we can. And we believe you are the right person to do it. And I'm glad you have a. Move that school forward as best we can and we believe you are the right person to do it and I'm glad you have a good team. Or we're able to add to your teams to 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 make it more effective. And good luck and we'll be looking to next year to see how it's going.
Thank you. I really want to reiterate that I really do appreciate the support that that all of you provide and Ben and Greg provide. To me as in trying to help our students grow. So I'll keep you posted on how we're how we're doing.
Okay, thank you very much. Next round of business.
Jonathan, I just say thank you to our team here at our principal at our next meeting. Emery Jordan, Director of Preschool will be providing an update and then also James Cook. When I told him that this was going to be a night for school improvement plans, he rightfully said, could I just just give me a couple of weeks? And so I've been smart enough to do that, but I want to thank these folks. You are all welcome if you'd like to hang around for my evaluation, but you're also very welcome to leave at the same time. So but I'll leave that up to you. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody and and keep up the good work. Okay, so we are going to move on to the superintendent's evaluation. And I was just, we don't usually do this, but. What I I what I'm saying, should we put it the the superintendent's. Up on the board then, or did you leave? Could you do that?
Me or?
I could, but. Put the form on the screen so people could see it. So I didn't have to talk as much. People could just read it. Is that possible?
I think you have to explain it, Jonathan.
Okay. It was just a question for Ben. This is part of our job is to evaluate the superintendent. It's required by the the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And they also set what the form with which we have to follow the evaluation. The form is made out of two distinct parts. One is the personal goals, the goals that are agreed agreed upon with the superintendent and the school committee. And there are five of those five goals and those are graded differently than. The other section, which are the standards and the standards are determined or dictated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And they also provide indicators. Which are they also determine. The superintendent provides us with with evidence of how he has met. The personal goals as well as referencing which standards and and indicators. His achievements apply to. So it the form is made up of of, like I say, two different parts. And what I'd like to do is start not with the personal goals, but with the. The required standards and.
Emily, while you explained it, still throw it on the screen just so we can read along at home, even though.
I'm 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 prepared. I have it now.
Okay, great. All right.
Where you want to begin?
I want to start with standard one. Those are your goals. There we go. So standard one is instructional leadership and as you can see, there are four indicators. That we grade him on. And then we give him an overall rating on on instructional leadership. And you can read. What those those those. Those indicators are and I'd like to start by just saying they did not adapt this. Form for this year. And some of these things are were very hard to. I found maybe some of the other members of the committee found it easier, but I found it very hard because. Some of the things just couldn't happen or because of COVID restrictions as as well as. This and that of of all the things that we've gone through. So as you can see, instructional leadership. Curriculum ensures that all instructions instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards based. Based units and instruction consisting of well-structured lessons, plans and measurable outcomes. And the way you read this is that two members of the school committee felt that. He could do, he needs improvement and four members felt that he was proficient. On the next one, IB one B. And instruction ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality and effort. Work engage all students and a personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interest and levels of readiness and three. Members of the school committee felt he needs and could improve on those era areas and three felt that he was proficient. I would just like to say that proficient means that he's doing everything perfectly right. And needs improvement doesn't is not a negative things. It just means he could do better. Joel, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm curious to, the chair, if it's appropriate, to hear from. The fellow members. So for example, when I was going through this. I put a little caveat in the comments saying, you know, when it's efficient, I mean, as efficient as possible, given the extraordinary circumstances. Dear, I'm curious if other members. You know, took the same route and skewed for this year or whether they said, hey, listen, I'm going to pretend this year or the other year and so it needs improvement.
I'm going to give everybody a chance to speak, everybody a chance to speak after we do each standard, okay? So we just go through this.
Certainly knocking it wide as 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 you will listen to these grades given, did everyone? What lens were people grading through? Grading with the pandemic lens or with a, you know, in a vacuum lens?
Right. Well, that's that's what I was saying at the at the at the the beginning. Is that they didn't adapt this to to what we were actually dealing with this year. And there are a lot of caveats, as as you said. In in grading this because number one, majorly, there was there was. There was a different set of priorities for every everything that we did this year. And and when we get up to his personal goals, you'll see that one of them was to keep school open. And but as far as having members weigh in. In the effort in 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 trying to move this along, I'd like to have, I'd like to go through this each standard and then let people talk. Go through the next standard, let people talk. Does that seem okay?
I know I'm not specific comments. I'm trying to get overall understanding, you know. This reads very critically, especially compared to what this is in the past for for reviews. And so I'm curious whether criticality is is, you know. If these need, if this needs improvement is only performance based or if they allowed the pandemic to force a needs improvement, that that sort of thing.
Well, I I qualified that by saying needs improvement is not a a negative things. It just means that that there's there's room for improvement and some people would say there's always room for improvement. But proficient is saying that they're doing everything. That is is expected. Exemplary means that they've gone above and beyond what is expected. Okay, Kathy had her hand up, but disappeared. I I can only see a couple of people. Kathy, did you want to weigh in on some?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm kind of low on battery, but. To Joel's point, I. I viewed it as in a normal year. Knowing, like you said, there are certain things that this year required that a normal year did not and maybe other things. Did not have as much. Importance. I mean, keeping our kids learning and all that. Kind of came in my mind as to as to that and just the reality that like O'Malley is, you know, in a sustainability. Status. So so there are things like that that came into my into my thinking. And there was nothing negative in terms of any ratings that I did, only the reality that we're we're clearly. Transparent about what we're working on.
Okay, so anyways, everybody, you know, will get an opportunity to to explain. What, you know, how they approached it. But Ben, could you just scroll down? Because there's one more indicator in 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 number one. So people can read those and see, but overall. The on the. On on the instructional leadership, five school committee members felt that Ben had done it was proficient. And one felt that they could do good. Could improve in in some way. So that's. That's that's good. Now, would anybody like to comment on instructional leadership? Melissa, and like I said.
So I just want to back up a little bit and and talk about. How how I evaluated it because I think that's important to have that conversation before we get into what we said. So I I think it's can be said that there's seven of us evaluating or six of us. And we each come from different perspectives, different backgrounds and have a different understanding of what these standards mean. And also have a different understanding of what. What we interpret as a rating. So I can I can only speak for myself and I can say that I am somebody that has performed many evaluations and had many evaluations performed on me. Both at work and on school committees. I've evaluated probably six or seven superintendents in the past. So when I come into evaluation, and this is to Joel's question, I come in trying to be positive. I see the glasses half full and I look for the good. Evaluations are difficult to do on people. As you know, with unions, most people get to negotiate who evaluates them and how they're evaluated. However, the superintendent in this situation doesn't have that choice. He gets. People who evaluate him are elected by the community, not for any other reason, you know, we we don't have extensive training in this. And we don't necessarily have the knowledge and experience in education as a superintendent does. So I find it sometimes awkward to do this type of evaluation. But just wanted to say, when I come into this, I come in in a positive way. I come into this, like Jonathan said, we all have room for improvement. When I base, when I give a proficient score, which I did on all these categories, to me, that means. Knowing we had a difficult year, I interpret him as doing the best he could. I don't see a reason to give needs improvement in my comments. Because I didn't see any areas where I felt like he should improve. In his attempt to accomplish what he's been trying to accomplish. So I know some are more critical than others when we do evaluations. I try to do this honestly and with a very, very open mind. Knowing that it's tough to be an evaluator and it's tough to be evaluated. They're both very uncomfortable positions sometimes. And I find doing the superintendent's. Evaluation puts me in that place because I don't necessarily have the same opportunities. By talking to coworkers and and going into schools and actually seeing what goes on. You know, we get reports at school committee meetings. So our evaluations are based on what is told to us or what is provided to us, not us being able to seek out. And and get into the day-to-day details of operations, other than what we discuss at a school committee level. So I just wanted to be clear that. My from my perspective and my comments and my ratings come from that perspective. So and also, I think Kathy and Jonathan can attest to this. The training we have had on the superintendent's evaluation in the past. They've made it clear that proficient is a very good place to be. And exemplary is rare. So I come into this evaluation with that with that opinion as well. For some that are new, I I kind of feel bad because this is your first time doing an evaluation. And you probably have absolutely no clue on what's expected. From the evaluation as far as meeting the. I don't want to say requirements, but the expectations that MAS C tells you when you do an evaluation of a superintendent. So I I feel bad for the the newer members of the committee getting thrown into this in the type of year that we've had. Because a lot of this is difficult to review, knowing the year was not an ordinary year. So I just wanted to say that and get that out there. And then I, if you want me to go into my comments, I can, or if you want to let other people speak, because I see other hands up, I'm more than happy to come back.
Like I said, we're just talking about the the standard one. So Joel. You're muted.
Sorry, I pressed the hand down button. So there you button. I so much what Melissa said, I came into this, you know, with a lens of. The pandemic year. So certainly. And was able to produce that would that for me a proficient this year. If he had done that in a normal year, it might not have hit proficient because there wouldn't have been this this pandemic, right? So again, it's important to get out there. There are some areas where if this is a normal year and Ben only hit a certain target. That might be a needs improvement, but in global pandemic year, that's a proficient on on my scoring. And so I it's kind of like this, read these, I want to make sure to kind of get where we're coming from. And so I scored him proficient right down the line through the standard. Again, as proficient as one can be, given the realities of this and fully expect that. Ben, next year will not be normal as it gets closer to normal and Ben has even more ability to really tackle normal superintendent stuff. You know, he'll he'll grab genuine professions without any sort of lens or training field, you know, so a comment for this section.
Laura.
Thanks. So speaking as a newer member who has never been trained. Or had this even fully explained ahead of time. I just want to say that I, to answer Joel's question and to put this in a broader context. I, it's impossible to look at some of these evaluation points in the context of. A being a first-year superintendent in a pandemic year. So I tried to sort of straddle the line, let's say, on some of these sort of. You know, the the standards that Desi puts in here, understanding that they had not made any changes based on. The pandemic and sort of understanding, you know, that. This was, this was an extraordinary year and. You know, and you know, I could speak more later when we speak to our our reviews. But just to say that there are things that this year were not the focus because the focus was opening our schools and getting our, keeping our kids safely in school. And so that was the lens that I used in trying to sort of straddle the line between. Desi standards, which didn't really reflect what what our year was and the reality of our year. So I don't know if that helps, but that's where I come from.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Anybody else like to speak to the first standard?
Jonathan, I don't think you can see me.
I I do know.
So to Joel's point, I. Well, first, I'd like to second what what Laura said, right? Coming in as a new person, having absolutely no training on this. And very little explanation. I found this challenging, especially in this year. But I will say that I really tried to look at this as. Not necessarily a normal year, but I looked at how many goals were linked to the standard. And there's really only one goal linked to the standard. And I think in in other years, if COVID was not happening, there would likely be more goals linked to the standard. Because we'd be able to emphasize. Curriculum instruction assessment a little bit more than we did in this this year. So I, to be honest, I put needs improvement for all of it because we just have, there hasn't been a lot of emphasis on this particular. Topic on this standard. And I think it's important for the superintendent to know sort of where we stand. As a committee and what's important to us. And I would like to see more of this in coming years when we have less focus. On COVID and just like basic opening. I don't know, Joel, if that answers your question more specifically.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay, so far for you.
I am, it was very difficult actually to do this. I really don't think it was the time. I'm sorry. I know he had to, and that's how we we do it because he just started. And he started boom, it was COVID. And I saw things, I put proficient in every single thing is because I don't want to actually. I mean, I'm not going to say he needs improvement because what he did behind the scenes was not just being superintendent, was everything. So and you didn't see that. And you know, I I can't say I was unsatisfied. I can't say that nobody needs improvement. We all can use improvement. No one really gets a five star in anything we do. We can always improve in anything. So but he started with, you know, like, okay, who do I, I don't even know half of my staff and my people. And then this COVID comes along and here we're doing where he's being doctor nurse, board of health, he's being, you know, legislative, he's he's being, you know, zoom zoomologist, I call us, because we're always on Zooms. And then I'm telling him go on budget and finance, and we're doing that. And then you're working through screws in his first negotiation. And then, you know, all of this, and then we're building a school, and we're doing that. And everything was putting on his lap. So I put proficient in everything because whatever task he had to do, he did it. And I don't think anyone should be graded. We just because it was this whole year was a year of hell. And it was a year of no book, no learning, no nothing. You can't say, well, we're going to follow this one, that one. Every community town was totally different. And we started from day one, and that was because we're all teamwork. And I think, you know, if anyone should be great, it should be all of us 100% for just succeeding this year. And not having any suicides like other communities with children, not having a lot of things. I think that we all actually did great because we all decided, you know what, we just have to work together. And he just came into this whole thing. So it's it's very difficult to say, or, you know, to grade anyone. But for me, behind the scenes, what I seen he's done, you know what, I would say he's a five in all of them because you didn't see that. And it wasn't based on his criteria of what he sees for the school. It was keeping us all safe. What we needed to maintain, how do you work with the DPW? How do you get this sterilized? What's going to happen? We have COVID. He was giving COVID reports. I mean, so how do you, how do you grade that? How do you do that? And I agree with Joel 100%. I don't think I've ever ever agreed with Joel 100%. I think we just love to because we're both Italians to argue. The fact that I agree 100% is very difficult. And we all have, you know, expectations, what we want. And to be honest, I I think that he's open to listen to anything that we can suggest and 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 want. And I think, you know, it's the teachers who, you know, they all email us, we know that during any kind of thing, whether it's negotiation contracts, whatever, we know we get all the emails and everything else. And we try to go back to him, you need to do this, and you need to really work with us or work with them. And it's difficult because you got a school committee. You've got your principals, you've got your teachers, you've got all this other staff, and trying to get to know them all, and then on top of that COVID. So you know what, I just want to say for behind the scenes, I'm telling you right now that none of you really understand half of the stuff that we did and need and and it was quite. And I really have to say, you know, to all the nurses, thank you very much. But you have some great, great people working in behind the scenes that, you know, you know who they are, because if I start naming, I forget one, and I'm going to get in trouble. So but it it's just they went beyond. They went beyond. And it wasn't, it wasn't because they had to. And that's what you have to remember. It's because we all needed, we were all afraid, and we all needed to survive. We didn't know what was happening. So that's how I feel. You know what, Ben, for, you know, superintendent mayor, behind the scenes, I want to thank you. You were a partner in all this. I put you on finance meetings. I threw other meetings at you where, you know, budget this way, we don't know what's going to happen. And then cares came, and then opera, and then what are we doing? And how do we do it and everything else? And you have this budget that you did, not only because of your budget and finance team, and because of all the school committee, you know, saying we need to do this better for next year. And you know, especially for Laura and Samantha, always asking questions, well, how do we do this? This is new. What do you do this? And what are we going to do for next September? Always looking forward. I want to thank you all because it wasn't easy. And that's why we have what we had today, and we'll still move forward. So how do you judge it? How do you, how do you, how do you do that? How do you say anything? So and that's how I feel.
Kathy.
So I'm gonna say some specific things about this particular standard so that we do have a record that kind of addresses some of this. Despite this year that we've had, I have been absolutely impressed with how empowered and creative and resourceful the leadership team has been. I think Ben cultivates an amazing collaborative, high quality, high expectation, innovative group that really kind of permeates down through through the different levels. So he's working with his leadership, his principals are working with their teachers, departments, like you say, the nurses and and all of them. I think all have done amazing work based upon the culture with which you lead this particular, in this particular year and in general. Things that were absolutely so impressive to me were our presentations on the new math version and assessments. I mean, even in this year, we we did what I would assume would have been done in a normal year, which is make progress on some of these really important foundational things of which we can monitor the progress of how our students are learning and and what we're delivering in terms of curriculum and the consistency. And so this groundwork has been laid, even in this most awful year to to try to make progress. And so we will, I I know we're, you know, modeled for being in in district. I also would guess that we are also a model for some of the major initiatives that have still continued and were really amazing accomplishments by our teachers and our educators that set us up for this coming year for even greater success. So I just wanted to make sure I hit on a couple of very specific things that to me were really impressive and and exemplifies what kind of an educational leader you are.
And I would agree with what Kathy said. I'm sure that if Ben had had a couple of extra hours a week, he might have spent more time on some of these things because I know that's where his passion is. It it's but as we've all said, the distraction was overwhelming this year and the need to do to keep things moving forward was overwhelming. So I I'm sure that when things settle down, these Ben will be able to spend a lot more time on some of these. You want to move on to standard two? And which is management and operations. And here you'll see that the ratings are all proficient or better. There is a typo here. It should be five and one exemplary. And so the environmental environment develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, and emotional and social needs. And, you know, four proficient to exemplary. And it goes on like that. And down to the budget, once again, five and one. So once again, the the overall rating is is proficient. And as I said before, proficient is 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 good. It's it's doing everything that you're expected to do. Joel.
Thank you for comments as to this particular section. And I said, obviously, again, everything was interpreted to mean for this year, but wanted to say that Mr. Lama showed particular scale and ability in dealing with school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and most importantly, ethical guidelines while managing the implementation of the ever changing emergency legislation, executive actions from state and federal authorities, as well as everything we were throwing at him. So I gave him proficient on all except for two D, which I gave an exemplary. That was really great. Thank you.
Laura.
Thank you. I wanted to point out that for fiscal systems, I felt that the way the budget worked this year, the way we were sort of given a big picture early and sort of brought through the process. Again, you know, this is, you know, this was my second superintendent and only, you know, an unusual year, but I felt like the process was very clear, very understandable, that we were brought through it, understanding the needs before the dollar signs. And I thought that was very important. And relatedly, the capital, the capital improvement plan, sort of integrating, you know, sort of a systematic look at where are we going to need some capital budget, you know, but put on, you know, DPW, our buildings, and getting that sort of in the pipeline, even in this year. I I felt that was was great and really helpful and a really good way to start planning for the future for our buildings and for our physical plant. So I I was, I was quite impressed with that.
Samantha.
Thanks. So you know, if we read to A, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. You you mean, you did all of that this year. You, I think you went above and beyond, and you held sort of a steadfast commitment to a belief that the kids needed to be in in school and all of your plans with the help of your staff reflected that commitment. And so I just, that's just one area that I feel like it was a really good introduction to you sort of as a person and your commitment to sort of a wide range of needs of kids in this community. And here we are, you know, four or five days until the end of school, and we did it. And I just think that particular area just deserves applause.
Thank you, Laura.
No, I just didn't lower it. Sorry.
Melissa.
Thank you. So if you read my comments on my on my form here, it's pretty much what everyone else just said. But I do want to highlight the collective bargaining processes that we've been going through over the past year, whether it be for the regular contracts or getting back into school contract, which was numerous, numerous meetings, endless hours, even on Fridays and Saturdays. Ben, I cannot say enough about how impressed I am with you and your ability to negotiate with people that you are just getting to know. And your ability to compromise and build consensus, you know, you, you, you really stood firm in your beliefs and your goals through negotiations. But at the same time, I really saw you and heard you listen and and try to come up with solutions to collaborate. And that, to me, is a huge benefit in having those types of skills in a superintendent. And I just can't say enough about how impressed I am with your ability in collective bargaining right now. It's tough. It's not easy. It's emotional. It's difficult. But you were able to be extremely successful in your conversations in addition to running the whole district, learning the budget, getting to know the whole city and everything else that you've done this year. So I just want to give you an extra credit for the collective bargaining. Because it was, it's an absolute pleasure to work with you in that capacity.
Anybody else? Okay, I would just like to say that this year was probably just walking into a this school year must have been like trying to cross a minefield without, you know, any without a mine detector. And you avoided catastrophe, and you moved things forward, and you moved them forward safely. And once again, we can't say it enough. The fact that we were in school for the full year is just an achievement that that's way beyond anything accomplished in in or anything we expected. And as you said earlier, we were looking at when we made that first decision to try to go to school, it was like, well, if we get two weeks, it'll be worth it. And we got the whole year, and it was worth it. And and you should be proud of that. So thank you. You want to put up standard three? Okay, standard three is community family and community engagement. And once again, I'll let people talk to particular things, but the overall the four people felt that the was proficient and two felt he was exemplary overall. So he constantly provided information to the community. So would anybody like to comment? Melissa.
I'm just going to read my comments, and they're not long. I said, if there was every year to have engagement, this year takes the cake. Unless Zoom meetings showcased your ability to lead and provide proper and effective resources to address the many concerns of our community. Your communications are sensitive, directed with equity and personalized, indicating your strong sense of understanding how the individual needs of the students. At a time when unconscious biases are challenged, your sensitivity and vulnerability to the struggles of many families is welcomed. So I am very impressed with your communication with us and with the community. And if we didn't have this, those great skills that you have, I don't think we would have been in school this year because we literally had to hold hands and bring everyone together to get everyone in school. And you were successful in leading that challenge. So I commend you.
Joel.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight. So I gave exempt three and three A and three C. And I want to just highlight that I thought, you know, Ben's genuine care for his staff, his students, you know, and the community that he, you know, kind of, you know, dove headfirst into this year. It was just so genuine. And you could, there was, there was no condescension. There was no this is a bother to me when I have to deal with you people. They were just like, I feel for you. I understand what you're going through. I'm trying my best. Again, whether you're my employee, whether you're one of my students, whether you're one of my students' families, it was just genuine care. And the way he communicated, he carried himself throughout, you know, whether it was a school committee meeting, whether it was a staff meeting, whether it was a negotiation. It was consistent that he had genuine care. And that was just that, you know, I think, you know, absolutely necessary to survive this year.
Said, and don't take this in any offensive way. As I, like I said, I did proficiency through the whole thing. I worked with them behind the scenes. But do you know what? You have to say too, in all fairness, we didn't open up just for us or Ben. We opened up because the teachers, we opened up because we had parents who wanted to. We opened up because your staff, okay? And that was all teamwork. So as far as maybe maybe I should have said, yes, for communicating with the staff, it would have maybe got a little bit higher because it wasn't really based on what you're supposed to learn in school is with the communication. Communications, you also have to thank, you know, Lauren Samantha speaking up, you know, how do we respond to people on Facebook? People want, you know, want to know how do we respond, what we can do? We should get the information out there. So it was really team effort. It's not that he didn't want to. And remember that. It was always about a team. So it's hard to say to someone, you're great this year. You did great. You want to communicate. But I do know that you're right, Joel. Again, it's two times, one more time, I'm shutting off. That, you know, behind the scenes with the negotiations and the teachers, he really defended and cared for his staff. He goes, you kind of give, I'm not going out there and saying to this, they 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 did this, you know, and they deserve this. So he did, you know, and it was hard. And and it was, you know, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? And but you have to also give credit is, did he listen to his staff? Yes. Did he, when it was reached out and what was happening? And did he get blamed for a lot? Yes. Did he, did they think that he was not communicating? He was staff, who was ever listening, who's on here tonight? Yes, he did listen to you. He did pass it on to my side or to the state or to whoever you think you wanted to. Were we both upset when, you know, the governor came down and he didn't put us first? He said, teachers, and I got all excited, and then it wasn't what we thought. And yes, so that for caring, because also he's been on the same side they have. And also because, you know what, he knows how it feels. It has nothing to do with, you know, what do I feel that he's not going to do great next year? Like I said, for all of you who don't understand, it's what I saw behind. If I was going to grade him for being a leader, absolutely 100%, it would have been a five. To really take my calls on weekends, I mean, absolutely. To saying, Ben, Saturday night, we have a cluster of COVID, and it's not going to go through. Yes. So like I said, he was a doctor. He was the board of health. He was, you know, ESL on weekends, when some of you didn't realize it, he ESL on weekends, when some of you didn't realize it, he was a co-partner with me in the city to do things because like I said, we had, it wasn't just our students, it was the population of the whole community. Okay. It was our teachers. It was our students. It was our parents. It was everyone. What are we going to do? And you have to understand, like a lot of them, like during the summer, well, how are we going to feed these students now? What's going to happen? What are we going to do on weekends? If we have to shut down again, what are we going to do with, they're not going to? It's behind the scenes that you're very lucky that we do have Ben. Okay, I can put, I could say fives on all of those. But I'm not a teacher. I don't know. I just know what I hear from other teachers. It's, it's kind of hard because we were all getting different kinds of emails and it wasn't against Ben. It was like, what are we going to do? It was mostly the emails that I got was not complaining about anything or any of us. It was just frightening things of what's next. And to get that out there and, you know, what do we expect? And the principals stepped right up, you know? I am so proud. I mean, I give us all a five, okay? But I want, first of all, I have to say it because I don't want people to think, oh, the mayor doesn't get along with Ben. I get along with him so well that I called him all the time on weekends and during holidays. And I think he changed his phone number, Ben, I need the other one. And, and like I said, I was very lucky to actually have that co-partner. Because for me, I didn't have to really worry about the school because I know Ben would. So as far as that, I would give him all fives. But I don't work with him as a teacher. I don't work with him as a staff member and I don't work, and, and I don't see his curriculum. I don't see what's going to happen for next year. I don't see how that is. I don't see how any of that is. And it's kind of hard for me to say as a school committee member, not as a mayor now, as a school committee member of what can we do to be better? I don't think anyone gets excellent in anything because we all have room to improve. And that's all I want to say, Ben. I really appreciated you as far as being a leader. And I want to thank you for that. As far as everything else, you're proficient. What can I say?
Laura. You mayor.
Thanks. I'm going to look back at mine. So I want to speak specifically to 3C communication. I gave Ben exemplary on this. And I think if there was ever a year that we needed a communicator, it was this year. I think, Ben, you're sort of consistent, clear, just, you know, addressing people's needs and families' needs and community needs throughout this year was, was exemplary, was what got us through this, which was what got the community, I think, to understand that we were doing this together. You know, you started every presentation with like, here are our goals, you know, to stay in school safely. Here's how we're doing. And I think, you know, I just, I, I consider that sort of one of the huge accomplishments of keeping us in school this year was the way that you communicated to us as a school committee, but more importantly, to the Gloucester schools' family and to this greater community. And I just, you know, I can't speak highly enough about that. I want to also say related to sort of just collaboration and working on family concerns. You know, I just, I really feel, I feel like this, these, we needed this so much this year to keep us going. And I really feel like you, you know, you just rose to the occasion and I'm grateful.
Anyone else? I would just, I would just like to say that the, a lot of the indicators here, you did a phenomenal job by writing letters and keeping in touch with people and staying, you know, giving people information. And I can only imagine that if you could actually talk to people and meet people and, and be in a, go to a PTO meeting or, or, or go to, go to something where you're actually seeing people face to face, how much, how much better you could do. And you're doing a great job at this now. So, you know, I think that you, you were handicapped and, and did a phenomenal job. And, and I, I look forward to when we can actually all, you know, stand in a room and look each other in the eye and have a laugh about something. Okay. Laura, you, you, you want to add to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one last thing. So my understanding of this whole process was such that we were also grading as if this was a normal year. It was somewhere in between. So I'm the one who said, who gave a needs improvement in engagement only for that reason. So I just want to, you know, only because we couldn't engage or you couldn't engage. So it wasn't, I just want to say, this wasn't a criticism of what you did. This was sort of looking at this year, if it had been a year when one could engage in person, which one couldn't. So anyway, that's a little bit of an explanation there. It doesn't, it doesn't display any criticism.
Anything else before we move on to standard four? Okay, let's, let's do that. Standard four is professional culture. And once again, there's there were four indicators that were rated. And you know, professional culture has to do with high standards, teaching, learning, high expectations, interpersonal skills. Once again, there was mostly all either proficient or exemplary. A couple of needs improvements and the once again, with, with some of the things that we've just said about is your, your ability to communicate through written work is very clearly above and beyond what anybody could expect. So once again, overall, five proficient. Who would like, Joel?
Thank you. Real quick one, obviously to feedback, like on the last set of sandwich communication was exactly what we needed and it was, you know, very much appreciated. I just wanted to highlight also for standard four, aff managing conflict. For anyone who had to, you know, deal with the bargaining this year, any agreement we'd have worked through. There was conflict by barrel full and Ben's ability to navigate that. Again, it was, it was all time. I got that in the room, right? Because this, this is, this is looking bad, but Ben's in the room. He's going to, he's going to this thing settle down and we're going to get to finish line here. So I think it was really important to highlight, you know, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, besmirching or this, this is a, you're full of emotion and you're full of nervousness and that carried into the negotiations a lot of times. But Ben was, you know, there to fall out of it. So, great job.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else like to speak about professional culture? Melissa?
Thank you. So I did, I rated you proficient in all these areas. But I do want to bring up, I would do want to bring up the leadership survey feedback report that you gave us as evidence for your standards. And I, like I said, I always keep it positive, but I, knowing that there's always room for growth, I just, I just want to bring this out. This was the one issue, not an issue, but this was the one piece of evidence that I found interesting. So I will, I'm just going to go to my comments. So conversations with you are enjoyable. At school committee meetings, you're upbeat, pleasant, gratifying with a strong sense of accountability. One area I'd like to see growth is building capacity and collaboration with your leadership team and staff. As to be accept, as to be expected, you acclimated yourself to a new school community. Relationships take times to, take time to build and maintain trust. The results of the leadership team evaluation provided by the new superintendent induction program reveals that you have developed strong relationships with many. However, a small few are hesitant to give you credit in areas where you feel confident. Knowing there's continuous room for improvement with all of us when it comes to interpersonal skills, I have no doubt responses from staff will improve as we progress in the new normal. So I really looked at the survey and tried to to figure out, you know, it, it seems to me, I, I think by reading this, that there was 18 people that were surveyed. And I noticed in just a very few areas, there was, there were times, I think maybe three or four times when you, you felt you were always doing something, but yet 40% of the staff felt maybe sometimes really or never. And again, it's, it's not a reflection of anything wrong. It just shows that there's room for improvement with building relationships always. But I just wanted to be cognizant of that a little bit. Knowing that there is documentation from you surveying your staff with some feedback, which I actually found helpful. And it's, it's awesome to get, but a good, a good reality check too sometimes. But I just wanted to bring that up. I think overall, the evaluation was excellent. And I can't expect more from you, but that was just one note that I wanted to point out in the evaluation. That even though I gave you proficient, I'm not saying you need improvement. I just think, just, just to be more aware of those types of relationships. When you ask for feedback, you're going to get feedback. So.
You appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak to professional culture? Okay. Well, once again, there's, there was, there were things that probably could have been done, done better or if, if in fact, you could actually stand in a room with, with somebody, you know, and that's one of the things I had the most trouble with is, is trying to make adjustments and consideration for the fact that you can't, just can't do these things. You can't, you know, you can't. As I was saying today, I'm just, you know, later on, we'll be talking about getting back into, you know, meeting in person. And, you know, part of the thing about meeting in person is, you know, you get to talk to people not about business, whereas in Zoom, it's just all business all the time. And, and you never get to sit around and, you know, talk about what you had for supper last night or, or we went out to eat or that sort of thing. And I, I think that's really important in, in building professional culture is, is having personal relationships with people that are beyond all business. And I hope that, you know, in the, in the future, we're, we can get back to that as quickly as possible. So Ben, you want to go to your, to your goals? Up at the top.
Wait, that's the wrong one. Hold on. It's not the right one. One second.
Take back my rating above visual presentations.
Now, hold on.
Performance goals.
I know. One second. Oh my gosh.
Page four thirteen.
I just got to find word again. Here we go. All right. Now you can see it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And that's the right spot, right?
And that's the right spot. So goal one. Open and operate schools safely based on clear health metrics, a balanced view of the risks to overall health, well-being of students and of guidelines published by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And everybody rated you exceeding, so that there's different ratings here for, for personal goals. You exceeded your goal. And I think we all feel that way. Would anybody like to comment on that? Joel?
It's been said a few times tonight, no one thought we'd do a fraction of what we did. And we were able to pull off, you know, 170 days in elementary in person. And doing so in a careful and thoughtful manner, you know, we look back now and go, oh, you know, we sailed through, but there were a lot of times where the hand was hovering over the red shut it down button, you know, and just like hoping, hoping, hoping you didn't have to press it, right? So it wasn't done callously and it wasn't done recklessly. It was done with a lot of concern and a lot of forethought. And, you know, great result.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, I just want to also comment that, I mean, without Ben's conviction about the importance of having our kids in school, literally from the moment it was a possibility from the Department of Ed that we could come up with a model that our kids would be in school. That was the charge and, you know, he led that charge. And, and I think, you know, there are many, clearly there are many, many superintendents out there that did not have that conviction. And I think in our community in particular, our students have been served as great as they could. You can't even walk and meet another parent. You know, and if you don't know them and you tell them you're on the school committee, oh my God, what a great year my kid has had. So thank you so much. I mean, people have reached out to the committee. They've reached out to people individually just to express their gratitude of, of everything we accomplished and in such a safe way. So I hope you know that the community is, is grateful and nothing talked to your conviction than the day that we had a school committee meeting and we opened school and you got emotional.
Thank you, Kathy.
I was.
Laura?
I want to, I, I think that's right. I think Ben leading the charge. And I also want to say, you know, thinking about that image of the hand hovering over the red button. Right? It, it really felt that way a few times. And I learned from you, Ben, because you said to me at one point, when I said like, ah, it doesn't look good. It's not, are we sure? And you said, if we shut this down, it's going to be very hard to open and it's going to take a lot of time and it's going to, it's going to change things. And so I, I feel like you balanced the safety and also sort of what it meant to be consistent this year and to have families and students have consistent expectations. I think that that was remarkable. And I think, you know, we all know other districts and other states where you know, this was scary. This was scary to do. This was hard to do. And you were convinced that this is what we had to do for our kids. And you were right. And I commend you.
Thank you, Laura. Melissa?
I, I agree with everything that's been said. I don't, I don't know how, I know, there's not even a word to say how impressed I am with the ability that we were open this year. And, and just to give you a sense of how awesome your role was in here, my father who lives in Florida, he lives down near Davenport. They had a newspaper article about how the Gloucester schools were open and he was reading it down there in Florida and couldn't call me quick enough to tell me that we're, we're on the map as far as a leader nationally for keeping schools open. And that is because you had the persistence and the determination to make sure that we had everything we need, all the information we need to make the difficult discussions, even when we were up till one o'clock in the morning, I think, for a school committee meeting. But you arranged all that and, and gave us the ability to make safe decisions. So can't commend you enough for this, for this, for this category. You are a true leader in keeping a school open during a pandemic.
Thank you, Melissa.
Anybody else want to comment on keeping the schools open? It seems to be the main topic of the evening. But as it should be.
Yes, it should be. But can I say something too?
Of course.
There's no, nothing against Ben, but your school stayed open because of everyone. I'm sorry, I'm going to mention a name and we couldn't have done it. And he couldn't have done it without Jeff Paco. Okay. On top of everything. I'm sorry, he, what's due is due. Like I said, I see a different Ben. I see someone that is, you know what, going with the state, going with the mayor, going what we need to do, going like I had to do. You know what? I couldn't have done it with my team. He couldn't have done it with his team, his team with the teachers and Jeff. My team was, you know, my staff. I mean, you, you just can't, you just can't. And, you know, and you're all saying all of these great things and that's great, but you're all forgetting that it was teams. You know what? If we didn't get the.
Hold on.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm saying anything. Okay. But you got to understand too, that if the teachers didn't come in, Ben couldn't teach those classes. And there was a fear that if we didn't do something, the teachers didn't come in. Yes. Did he organize them? Absolutely. Did he get them together? Did he bring down some of the fear? Did he get Jeff involved? Did he get all these things? Yes, he did. And you're right on that part. But remember, I can't say that, you know, he was, you know, and, and, and it's not that I don't appreciate him. Because I, like I said, I'm totally different on a different side. But what I know, what he said to me is, I have to get my teachers. My teachers are the only ones who are going to make this school open. We need to get the staff. We need to get the, you know, is the, is the DPW. And the teachers wouldn't open unless my DPW was going to go do the air vax and do this and do that. And who organized that? But you have to understand. But you have to understand, he, like me, I'm told by citizens and city council and everything else. And he's told by his school committee, but he's also told by the teachers and what he is and his principals. But you have to give credit where credit, his right hand was Jeff Paco. And I have to tell you, he went beyond, you know. I know, I know it's his proficiency.
Hey, but I'm going to dare to speak for the school committee right now. Courage for Ben is not detraction against anybody else.
Oh, I know. I'm not saying that. I'm saying I can't give, I, no. Joel, I agreed with you twice. Why are you going to do this again? I knew there couldn't be a third turn. I thought something was wrong. I mean, twice, twice we agreed to each other in this. I knew there wasn't going to be a third time. Give it up. No. I was saying that, you know what? It's great that you're doing that, but you didn't know also behind the scenes. And I'm just telling you what I'm seeing. It's hard for me, you guys heard from everything else and you were on him with negotiations. I'm not in the negotiations. You were on him with your budget and finance. I wasn't there. You're on there, what you're going to do for the curriculum. Remember, I'm not on there. So it's kind of harder for me to look at what you're seeing. That's all I'm trying to say is I am not giving him a proficiency because I don't not agreeing or anything else. I'm just telling you, I saw beyond that you didn't see. I'm sorry, the leadership. I'm seeing, you know, I'm seeing leaderships in some of your staff. I'm seeing leadership that Jeff went beyond. I'm seeing leadership that, you know, yes, Ben was up all night. Ben got all my calls. Ben got the weekends. Ben got the clusters. Ben got a lot of things. Ben put on Zooms. I even sent them to half of you and 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 Melissa and everything else. I just want to let you know, it's not that I, you know, well, the may don't care about voting on this or doing the surveys. Remember, I didn't do it for Sapphire either. Actually, I'm doing more now, Ben, than I've ever had. Because I don't see what they see. I'm the mayor who has to run a city and yet I don't go on the small committee groups. I'm not on any of your subcommittee groups. So I don't see you in action. I'm not on the negotiation. I see it after what we hear. So I just wanted to let you know that this is the first time that I've worked this close in all my years of politics with the superintendent. Okay? And it was just amazing that I did have that. And that's what I wanted to tell you. If I had to do it like as far as managerial skills on the whole city, what he had to do like I did, it's totally different. That's all I want to say is that by saying proficient doesn't mean he didn't do a job. He did the job that he needed to do for me. And then now you guys are now looking at the job he needed to do for you. That's all I wanted to say, Joe. Khabish? Now I'm happy. Okay.
Okay. Anything more?
Can I just add one real quickly? I want to thank Ben's wife too. The amount of hours that have gone in by and everybody else's wife or husband as well, including our own. Because if we didn't have the support of our families and if our staff didn't have the support of their families, none of this would have happened. So we should be evaluating everybody. I just want to note the thanks to the family members who held everybody up that needed to be held up. I think it's a good, good time to say that.
Sure to pass it on to Trina.
Thank you. And the dogs and cats too.
Yeah. So we're going to move on to goal two, which is build the capacity and collaboration of a leadership team. Okay, and three people went with substantial progress and and three people felt he met this, this stand, this, this goal. So would anybody like to comment on building capacity? Joel?
Just to make sure it's up for these goals, my rating was based on, I didn't, I didn't handicap for COVID. I just said, because these are all goals, right? And so this is how your ability to work through, so you know, I gave you some, I gave you one exceeded, two significant and one some, which is on number three. And I will go through why my overall evaluation speaks to them. But I just wanted to make it on the record that my evaluation for this portion did not have a COVID lens, just had a, how far are we able to get with your goal? You know, period.
Great.
Yeah, I think that a couple of these goals are not goals that could be achieved in a year. You know, that they were going to, especially in the first year. And they were sort of bigger, bigger goals than than a one year sort of motion. So just for anybody who's listening, the ratings are different here. We're not talking, what we're talking about is is that they did not meet the goal, showed some progress, made significant process, met the goal or exceeded. So those, those ratings in the, in the, the middle column are significant, making significant progress to achieving the goal. And in the, in the, in the, in the second column, it's, it's made some progress. So these are all positive with the exception of the, you know, the first one. So would anybody like to speak to a collaboration, a leadership team? I think we saw you know, a good example of that tonight. Kathy.
I'll comment. The, I've just been so impressed with everyone on Ben's team that have come before us this year in terms of different topics. We have heard from Martha Jo in food service. We have heard from Adam Mayo, who, you know, literally stepped into the job as, as Ben did this year and really took control. I go back to that empowerment, but also the strength with which he has people as part of his team. And and everybody has come to us with a really positive attitude and from an objective eye. I'm, I'm sure they got as much job satisfaction out of working with Ben. Despite how hard of a year it is, you know, a lot of people could get, you know, just demotivated and say, oh, this is too much. But really, everybody showed their real quality of their professional skills this particular year. And thankfully, they were all brought before us at times too. So I think that shows a lot of character for a leader to have other people present to us. It just is a, I think it's a huge strength. And I, and I do want to mention Greg Bach, who literally created a sixth elementary school, handed out hundreds of Chromebooks. I had to go into the main office this summer and there was not a time that I went in that he was not there ready for families and greeting families and and all the curriculum work and everything. I mean, it's just been an extraordinary year of so many things in the air. And and the team that is working on it is just extraordinary. So I thank you to all of, all of your leadership team.
Right. Anybody else? Melissa.
I just want to add, I was going to recognize Greg in the beginning, Greg Bach in the beginning, and I didn't. And I was hoping to be able to say something and Kathy, this is a good segue. So I just want to say to Greg, you're like the unsung hero for this year too. I mean, Ben coming in new, I mean, I'm sure there was a lot of dependency on you to, to pull things together very quickly. And knowing you and how committed you are to our district and the trust and confidence you have in our staff, I'm sure a lot of this evaluation, great things being said, is credited to you as well. So I feel like we're kind of evaluating you as well. So just want to say and recognize Greg Bach for this year as well.
Thank you, Melissa. That was very nice of you to say, but.
And you, I too.
Yeah. You've all said a lot of wonderful things about Ben. And I just have to tell you, as somebody who has worked with a lot of superintendents and been in Gloucester for a long time, he has done an extraordinary job, unbelievable. Never seen anything like it. So we were really lucky to have him join us this year and take us through this difficult year. It's a fantastic job.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you for everything.
And that's the whole thing. See, Greg, like if it wasn't for Marianne Boucher, not only tonight, but for prior, when they were saying, you know, should kids go back into school, whatever? For telling me what, what her experiments with her grandchildren and how wonderful those teachers and you were, I wouldn't know. Now Kathy is in the office and she sees things and they integrate with all of you. I wouldn't know. I just know of what I have through my side. So like I said, goals and things that I can set up and do, people don't take it offensive. I am not trying to say, oh, this person's not good enough or this one doesn't do that. I just know what I see, what I worked with. Okay, so I know, Greg, we've worked in the past. You've always been there. You've always been everything. But I haven't seen you or even talked to you basically in the past year because you've been doing other great work. Like they said, we had the extra elementary school for the people who were doing the Zoom. I don't know who was doing them. I don't have a list. I don't have that information. And the fact is that all of you do, so I can't say what was going on and not going on because I had a city to run and that's hard. That's why back then, and thank God they did, so for anyone knows, it's in the charter and the ordinances that the mayor is not the chair of the school committee. Because that's what a lot of the mayors are complaining about, because it was very difficult. Because you had to do this. And I am very lucky that we never had that. So I can run the city because I'm a mayor and I can look on the outside. And looking on the outside, I applaud all of you. Because you brought so much information. All of you, the negotiation team, the questions that Samantha and and Laura, so wait a minute, let's do this one. Joel was saying, well, you know, if you're doing it this way, I actually think we should do this way and this should happen. And Melissa with the negotiation and Kathy with the budget and everything else and Jonathan, I wouldn't know those things. So you bring it this side. In the meantime, I'm, and never mind thanking his wife, the dog, the cat, I don't know what he has or whatever. But the fact is like he was my right hand for helping out what we needed to do. So that's why I wanted to tell you. And Greg, thank you. And also Adam, I mean, getting the bus drivers, getting that. Do we pull together? Like, I am so proud. You know, it's like, and you don't hear it, but I hear it from all the other mayors. How did you do it? And I said, I didn't. I've got the school committee. They go, what? You get along with the school committee? I said, no, not all the time, but yes. You know what I mean? And they said, well, you do this and you don't have to be, no, it's just amazing. A lot of them are looking at the amazement of my school committee, my, you know, my team, you know, city councils and everything else. They, I'm going to tell you one thing, they were shocked that, you know, we all call and text. They were shocked that, you know, what, we're all on all of that. They were also shocked that Ann Margaret, I'm sorry, Representative Ann Margaret Ferrante and Senator Bruce Taft. When we first met with some of the people from the governor's office, when Secretary Kennedy was coming down, he made us meet individually. And I said, no, we can meet together. He says, no, ma'am, I want to meet with them individually. And then he brought us together, goes, I've never seen a city this way that you all can get along in one room. He says, I asked separate meetings because that's how everyone does it. They don't, they don't connect. Well, Ben already connected to Bruce and Ann Margaret. We all connected to them. We are different in Gloucester. We all connect. We have them. And they have seven, seven, seventeen communities, Ann Margaret, three. But yet Ben already, I can't say, well, Brendan broke them in or they broke, vice versa, but we already have that team. So I'm seeing this side. I said, please. I'm actually learning so much tonight from you of how you see Ben and our staff and our school and what you seen during COVID. And what you seen, I'm actually pleased that I'm hearing this and that I really can't add my input. But I can add my input on the other side. We do have remarkable people. We do have remarkable teachers. We do have remarkable everything in our school system. I know that sometimes we argue with this one, that one. But honey, I wouldn't trade any one of you or any one of our staff in our city. So thank you.
Okay.
Jonathan, can I just, I was not speaking much tonight, but I do want to just say one thing about, about this team, the leadership team we have. And just quickly, I want everyone to know, listen, whoever listens to this, I think you all know this. But the team we have here, the leaders of the schools, the departments, directors, the coordinators, they are an unbelievable group of people. I have never worked with a team that is this talented, this cohesive, this experience, but also more that they, they dig in and they get things done with people. And I am lucky to the bottom of my, you know, heart, you know, for them and all the work they've done. And and I just want to just acknowledge their team because because of this one, this is a goal here. They're just, the city needs to know that the schools are led by, the schools and the districts and department are led by remarkable people. A truly amazing group of people.
Samantha?
I just want to piggyback on that because I've, I don't know how it's been in previous terms and previous years about how much FaceTime the school committee has with the leadership team. And just even sort of the coaches that we've seen, we've had so much, so many good presentations from both leadership team and just from staff in general. And most of you know that I have a kindergartner starting in the fall. And I have like, I just feel so confident in sending, you know, my children to this school district because of all that FaceTime, just, just seeing how competent and how dedicated the leadership team is and the staff. It's just, it's just unbelievable. And I just feel so privileged to have this sort of view of our school system. And I just appreciate Ben bringing those folks to the table. Because it just gives us a really nice view into what's happening into the schools. And again, I don't, I only have this year really to, to gauge, so I'm not sure how much the school committee saw that amount of work, but I'm just very appreciative of the work that's being done and just the evidence that you bring to the table. So, thank you. Looking forward to being a parent finally in the, in the system.
We'll take good care of you.
Okay, is anybody else? You've done a great job with leadership team. Everything you've said is, is true. And I just have to say that probably just when you'd only been here a month or two, a number of, of members of that leadership team came up and personally told me that we made the right decision.
Thank you. By the way, so did I.
Yeah. You're right. Okay, let's move on to a goal number three. Understanding and embracing the diverse culture of the city of Gloucester and the Gloucester Public Schools. And this is one that is clearly hampered by COVID restrictions. And, and, and the, the ratings reflect that. But that being said, anybody like to comment on the diverse culture? Samantha?
So although, you know, we can sort of assume that this has been hammered, I still feel like Ben has sort of gone above and beyond. In just in, even with the limitations that we have, just from the beginning, how many people he reached out to, you know, I just know from the conversations that I had with him, the community leaders that he reached out to, that I'm not sure were ever really connected to the schools. And that was really important for me, coming onto the school committee, to know that the schools were really, had a really solid relationship with the organizations that are doing so much good work with some of our, you know, toughest populations. And I, I just, I can't say enough about Ben, what you have accomplished in this year and the relationships that you've built with the goal of understanding our diverse culture. So I just really appreciate that. And I know, you know, that you'll just continue to do even better things, you know, when we can actually see people in person and, and really get to know our community. So thank you for that.
Melissa?
Thank you. I agree with everything that Sam said. And I just wanted to add that I, I talk to a lot of people in the community and I'm involved in a lot of things in the community in some capacity. And I don't think I know anyone that doesn't know you. So I know COVID is amongst us, but you have managed to meet everyone, build a relationship with everyone that I think you should be doing. I don't see that the pandemic slowed you down in this area. I mean, it's remarkable how many people know your name and, and how they know you. I think you've been in the schools more this year than other superintendents have been in the past. You are building relationships. You are doing everything you said you would do in this school. So I felt like you clearly met it. As far as knowing and understanding the cultures, I reflect back on the conversation that we had after we hired you. And we met outside because we couldn't meet inside and we were sitting on the picnic bench and I got a chance to know you. And the conversation we had about the different cultures in the community and the diversity and the issues that are amongst our families. I knew right then that we had hired the right person because I truly saw your compassion and your understanding. And to me, that was a win win. So part of my evaluation on this topic reflected that conversation. And I don't, I think it's a conversation I'll never forget because, you know, I really felt like I got to know who you were very quickly. And I think. you know, I really felt like I got to know who you were very quickly and I think other people are too. And that's why you're getting such a positive response because you have been able to build relationships and and meet people in different departments all over the city and other parents. And so you're doing, doing this very well. So I think you've met this, clearly met the goal and didn't have any instruction in the way because of the pandemic.
Thank you, Melissa.
Anyone else? Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, I took this a little, I used Joel's technique on this and use it, took it fairly literally and just said, you know, embracing, understanding and embracing the diverse culture of the city of Gloucester and then and until you can go to the mayor's party on Middle Street during Fiesta and see the council president dressed in a tutu ready to walk the greasy pole, I don't think you'll really get that true understanding of of Gloucester, but I I think you'll, 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 you'll realize it when you see it. But so there's, 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 there's room for improvement on this one. But you're doing a great.
Worry, Ben, you're not going to miss anything because next year we're going to put Jonathan Pope in a tutu.
Long as not me.
Yeah. And you know what, Ben, and all around and everything I'm hearing. And believe me, right now, every time I shut my face off because I am getting a text saying, yes, he's done this. Yes, he's done that. I have no idea what ELL is and saying he's doing great with them, who's getting to know the family. So I I have no idea and I'm learning. So thank you, Ben. Thank you. And thank you, everyone.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm gonna miss you.
Number four.
No, I was talking about Joel.
Got it. I'm with you.
Okay. We're going to go to number four. Participate in the new superintendent induction program. And you say right up front, due to the COVID nineteen conditions, this will be a long range goal that will span two academic years. So consequently, you've got three made substantial progress and one and three met that goal. So considering that you're basically saying you 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 didn't make it yourself. That's pretty good. Anybody want to comment, Joel?
I just want to let everyone know, if you have a window to open, the heat just broke and a cool breeze just showed up. My fellow committee members.
Okay, my window's been open.
One thing on this, just quickly is, I want to thank the committee for allowing me to participate in this. My coach is Jane Tremblay, former superintendent of Linfield. I mean, the whole program is fantastic, but Jane herself has been a, just a, just a huge benefit to me. Great coach, good friend now, but but she's been really instrumental and just you know, someone I know I can call when I, when I, you know, have a question or need to really pursue things. So it's really you don't see it as much, but but it's been tremendously beneficial to me on many, many levels. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the final goal. Make forward progress on long term capital planning and improvement. And there's one made some progress and five people felt you met that. So anybody, Melissa?
I I'm just laughing because I'm just thinking of all the accomplishments this year. So on top of suffering a pandemic and being a leader to the world and getting us back in school. You were also able to alchemize yourself with building a new school on top of everything. And you got thrown into a building committee where there's a lot to learn. I mean, I still learn watching it. I'm actually learning from you. When you speak with Kathy and Jonathan on those meetings. But that that's just like the cherry on top of the cake. Here you go. You have this mess. And by the way, you need to build a school where the community is not in consensus of, yes, we won the vote. But obviously the conversations are ongoing, challenging, to say the least. So you've clicked, in my opinion, you've clearly met this. I mean, we are talking about modulators. We are talking about other capital projects. You are aware of the status of the buildings. You you keep in touch with DPW. So in my opinion, you clearly met this goal more than I thought you would. While dealing with all the other circumstances you had in the district. Hope you be here for Beaman and Plum Cove.
All right, Joel?
Thank you. So I was the liar with some progress. And it would be clear that I do not expect that you could have made more. However, the need for a long term capital detailed capital plan is so crucial. That, you know, I I don't see that as the goal that's been met, nor was it the goal that was meetable this year alone. So that's explaining why I'm the liar. I do not begrudge you for the progress you made and how quickly you've come up to speed with the numerous facility challenges in front of you. But I would not stop where we are. I would say there's quite a ways to go in the planning process. So thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Kathy?
Yeah, I want to just address the feasibility with which the capital plan has been presented this year. And I think for the first time. I mean, obviously a highlight was last November when the voters voted for this new school. We certainly with your help provided, you know, the information to the public with which they got behind the school. But between your relationship with Mike Hale and John Dunn. You know, just the the idea that we are at the point where we're going to put a plan in place for the modulars, that it is on the realistic path that we know there's a sense of urgency, just the credibility with which you can partner and team with people to make these things happen. You know, gives me great confidence that, you know, these things will continue to happen. Like when we need things like new windows at O'Malley, we do the statement of interest for the MSBA. We come up with a plan and it's very action oriented and I think in a really short amount of time. I mean, it's, doesn't take much to identify some of the needs facility wise in our district, but it does take a lot to be able to have those constructive conversations with which to move them forward. And that has happened under you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Capital planning. Well, it's, it's clear that you are paying attention to all of the aspects of the running the school district and 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 in the past. That hasn't always been the case and capital planning is is always the one that seems to get you know, swept under the bed. I'm afraid. And and Joel's right about the need for and you have started that process in a constructive way. Now that the fact that you you walked into the, it wasn't your, your planning that, but you the new school is not something you thought up, but you've done a great job promoting it and moving it forward. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. But you've done a great job. And like I say, but I agree with Joel to some extent that we need to keep working on this and 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 get something more definitive and clear for everybody to understand because we've seen with the new school, in spite of how much time and effort was put into the planning process. People still are saying, well, how come we didn't know anything about this? You know, how come we didn't know it's going to be this tall when it's been there, you know, for a year and a half? So you've got to keep it up and you've got to be, you have to, you know, persevere and be persistent with capital planning. Because everybody will be surprised when you say, oh, we're going to do this now. Okay, so let's go to the total rating. It was the unanimous consensus of the committee that overall your rating was proficient overall. And that's the end of this. If anybody wants to put a cherry on the sundae, now's the time. Laura?
I just have a question. So does Ben see our individual or how does this work?
Yes, he sent, I I sent them all to him. He has them all and with the comments and and we've done it a number of different ways over the, over the my tenure. There used to be, there used to be cherry picked and put into the, we will vote this, by the way, at 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 the end of this, we'll vote it and it'll go into his, his record.
So.
The comments will not be there. The comments are are institutionalized by this meeting. So those, you know, the fact that those will go in the minutes of this meeting. All of our personal comments, those, those will be that record of of our comments.
So in that case, I'd like to read my sort of overall comment.
And this, and this is exactly what you should do.
Okay, so let me get to that spot.
While we're waiting, can we just give a huge shout out to Maria that has to capture all this?
I can send it to you, Maria. I can email it to you.
Maria, I speak slowly and clearly. I never use the word um. I try and keep it as easy as possible, right?
It's not long. The 2020, 2021 school year has been extraordinary. Just before it began, in the midst of the global COVID nineteen pandemic, Gloucester hired a new superintendent, Ben Lamas. Ben had not worked in our district previously, so was therefore learning about the community, the schools, the learning models, the cultures, the challenges, the accomplishments, et cetera, while working to open our schools in the fall of 2020. In my opinion, Ben has done an exemplary job, indeed one that was used as a model by Governor Charlie Baker on how to get children back into school safely. I have given Ben an overall rating of proficient because of the categories used to evaluate him through Desi's evaluation rubric. I have rated him exemplary in some, proficient in most, needs improvement in a few. I do not believe the requirements of opening Gloucester schools safely allowed for the kind of focus on district improvement goals and classroom instructions and the like that we would expect in a normal year. However, I want to make it clear that I believe his work this year to have been above and beyond expectations. I look forward to seeing sustained work toward curriculum development, high level instructional work, continued building of the leadership and instructional teams, and more focus on reflecting the diversity of the Gloucester community and its teaching staff in the years to come. Well done, Ben.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you very much.
Joel?
Thank you. I'll throw my comments in so they're in the record. The Gloucester Public Schools was fortunate to have had Mr. Lamas at the helm as it navigated truly uncharted waters resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic this year. Our district set the bar for the entire North Shore, if not the rest of the Commonwealth, or as Melissa alluded to tonight, potential of the nation, ensuring that without compromising the safety of our staff, our students and their families. Our students received as much in person instruction as possible while also providing a robust virtual school setting for staff and families unable or unwilling to participate in person. Mr. Lamas' goals were lofty for a normal year, let alone this particular year. And again, my ratings of some progress or significant progress throughout his evaluation, despite being technically short of met, should not be interpreted in any way as less than satisfactory. I could not have asked or expected Mr. Lamas to accomplish more progress toward these goals during this year. That said, I encourage Mr. Lamas to continue to work toward his goals of learning the ins and outs of our community, fostering a more collaborative leadership team and robust long term capital planning, the last of which is a goal that no superintendent or school committee has been able to accomplish for more than 20 years and all of which are vital to the survival of this district. Where Mr. Lamas has left very little room for improvement is the way in which he treats his staff, his students and his students' families. I was continuously impressed with the level of professionalism, empathy, excitement and genuine care for all district stakeholders demonstrated by Mr. Lamas through not only his words, but his actions. As the leader of this district, he is setting the right tone and conducting himself as a role model member. Thank you very much, Ben, for this year.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you very much.
Melissa?
My comments are a brief, well, a little bit brief, and I will send them to you, Maria, so you can just copy and paste. In your first year being a full time superintendent, you managed a crisis and successfully navigated the Gloucester Public Schools through one of the most difficult challenges our district has ever been confronted with. Working with your administrative team, your well thought strategies and plans were executed in a manner that put teaching and learning first, while at the same time kept our school community safe. While managing this pandemic, your observations and insights to student needs were exceptional, meeting the expectations of our parents and guardians and community members. While trying to balance the fears of the unknown, your willingness to be flexible and improvised while reacting to a public health crisis proved to be prosperous. Keeping our school district strong in the areas of preparedness and readiness with strong operations. Through your leadership, you were able to move our technology based platforms into homes, keeping students engaged not only when in class, but also when at home during remote learning time or through the remote academy. This past year taught you patience, understanding and how to problem solve the issues that have become the new normal. Over the past year, you have been calm and empathetic with parents, guardians, community leaders, department heads, school staff, keeping ongoing communications with key stakeholders open. As a result, Gloucester Public Schools is one of the few districts that performed in class learning and safe school buildings even at times when the pandemic was at its worst. Your communications were truthful, informational, with a consistent positive tone. Your willingness to spend your time researching and to provide resources to assist the school committee, guiding us to make difficult decisions was key to our success this past year. I look forward to working with you and anticipate your vision as the students return in the fall.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, Kathy?
Okay. So when we were doing the search, we had one of our informational sessions with the school committee members in Brookline, of which you had only been the superintendent for an, as an interim for a short amount of time. And one thing I'll never forget, they said, working in Brookline is like, you know, one year here is like five years anywhere else. And I must say, your first year here has to be the next five years of your experience as a superintendent, given everything that you've had to deal with. Yeah, take care of that. Then next year will be easier, hopefully. So what a year to begin as superintendent in a new district. You have performed admirably and provided strong leadership and demonstrated remarkable resilience this year. Your commitment to Gloucester students is genuine and extraordinary. You embrace Gloucester, our students and their families in the moment, the moment you accepted this position. Families have been kept informed and listened to. There have been many unsolicited communications on you and the way you our schools have operated this school year, which have been extremely positive and appreciative. Educators have been an integral part of the district finding new ways to teach and educate students, which has benefited students and families tremendously. You've built relationship with key members of city administration and departments, which has enabled our schools to open and operate safely. And you have adapted to the ever changing guidelines along the way. The success of having students in school from day one was recognized by Governor Baker as a model for the state and our schools have made our community proud. This would not have happened without your unwavering commitment that our students are best served in school and your reliance on help data to provide how our, to guide how we, our schools operate safely. Your approach to of of quote, working together to get better, has provided an environment of openness and collaboration where we all, including you, will continue to learn and improve. I appreciate your openly communicating this approach as the schools work to tackle challenges and work to improve communications processes and instructional practice, et cetera. You take accountability for the actions of the district, never in a finger pointing way, and learn from the experience. This is true leadership. Your communication style is open and responsive. You have built respectful relationships throughout the committee, community, the city council, the city department heads, our school building project team, district partners, which benefits, brings great benefits to our schools. And you do this all with a great sense of humor and humility. The humanity with which you lead is rare, refreshing and inspiring. I must highlight the way you handled the hurtful situation that involved our CFO. The leadership and compassion with which you responded was extraordinary and is all too rare these days. You dealt with this head on as you saw a colleague in a difficult situation and used it as a tremendous teaching opportunity for our schools and our community. I will never forget it. Your experience in school building projects has been integral to keeping our new school project on track and gaining support from the community for the project. Community forums engage residents and provide important updates leading up to the November vote. You led an important redesign of the project website and continue to keep the community informed as we move along with this project. The new combined East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building is a huge step forward in the long term capital planning and improvements. Additionally, the recent Additionally, the recent capital plan for the district prioritizes much-needed additional investment and provides the city with important information with which to plan in the short and long term. You are a great educator and an equally strong operational leader. Ben, you've done a commendable job on every aspect of the role of superintendent in Gloucester Public Schools, and I thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, very much. You're muted, Jonathan.
Joel, you have, and I just wanted to pass on that Sam got booted out for some reason. She's having trouble logging back in. And her, her absence should not be a reflection on her, her view of Ben as a superintendent. This is not her storming out in disgust. Zoom issue. Just trying to get back on. She might not make it.
All right, well. That being said, if anybody has any of their comments that they submitted with this thing and want to have them in the record, then I think we can just communicate that with Maria and, and agree that we can enter those in, those comments into the record. If that's not. You know, Sam wanted to read hers and can't get back in then. But wants to have included. Anybody else? I just, I, I, I'm not going to be redundant and, and repeat. Most of which is, everything I would, would have said has already been said. I would just like to point out one, one other thing that I don't think we've touched on tonight, which was fairly remarkable. And there was the, in the course of trying to get kids back into school. There were a number of challenges, which, you know, convincing people that it was safe, convincing that this and that, how we would do it, how we would manage it, how we would run the buses, all of those things. But the thing that didn't get mentioned was, was the fact that we had to come to agreements with every one of our bargaining units about working conditions. And we were able to do that. You were able to do that. And that was, that is one of the key reasons that we have achieved, what we have achieved this year of being in, in school for the entire year. So you're back, Sam? You want to add anything to?
Sorry, I, I'm still trying to find. I lost everything because my internet.
Okay, well, what, what I said while you were gone is that if, if, if people want to add to this evaluation by submitting some of their comments, then we agreed that we would accept those into the record without reading them in front of in, into the record, that they could just be sent in and they'd be reflected in the minutes. Okay?
Thanks for time's sake. It's probably good to move on and I'll send them.
Yeah, we still have a couple of things to do. So that being said, unless anybody else has something to say, I would make a motion that we, that we approve the superintendent's end-of-cycle evaluation as presented and, and submitted into the Superintendent Lamas's personnel file.
Second.
Any discussion? Kathy?
I have a question. I know upon, you know, part of our time is to discuss and, and listen to each other, and if we had any changes we wanted to make in terms of ratings, you know, some people who may have thought, yeah, I'm rating on pandemic versus not, and we're swayed to have altered our ratings a little bit, are we allowed to send those to you? I mean, not necessarily overall, but some of the little, some of the smaller categories. And you can just make sure everything ties to the final document that gets put into the record.
I don't see any reason we can't do that, but I just think we would have to, everybody would have to agree to it. You know, so there's no reason that we could just put off the vote of the final record going in and let people make adjustments and resubmit them, and I could, I could modify it and then we could just vote it without any real discussion next, at our next meeting. Joel's got his thumbs up.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. And that, then we'll, we'll just table the vote on this until we tune up our, tune it up a little. Because it's, 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 once again, this is another thing about meeting remotely all the time, and it's all business and, and, you know, under normal circumstances, we'd be standing in the parking lot for half an hour after the meeting, talking about, you know, whatever. But perhaps about Ben.
Maybe not tonight.
Not tonight. I could go out and stand in my driveway, but there's nobody there.
Jonathan, can I just say a couple of things quickly?
Yes.
First of all, thank you all, committee mayors, mayor taken for your, your very generous and honest comments tonight. I really appreciate that. And a couple of things, one, you know, when you folks were interviewing me and others were, it was pretty clear that communication, communication and connection were super important in this community. And, and, and so I thank you for making that clear to me, and I, and I, I trust from what you said tonight that, that I've done a fairly good job of doing all those things. So that, so I appreciate the clarity with where you folks were in terms of what the community and the school system needed. That helped me, it has helped me a ton. Another thing is, I, I'm the youngest of five, and I really wish my brothers and sisters could hear all this tonight because they've got a little different opinion of me than you guys do. Maybe at some point I'll have them watch it. But then the, one more, a couple more pieces. One, I just, I, I think you know this, but I, I just want to be clear about it is, first of all, I am, no one has ever been so lucky as to have so many, you know, right hands, as I have had this year in terms of just everyone helping out in so many ways. I won't name folks, but everyone helped out, right? And that I will never, ever forget that I couldn't have done any of this without, with everyone's help, families, staff, all staff, I mean, all of you, the mayor, department heads, from the city, John Dunn, Mike Hale, everyone, so that just, I'll never, ever forget that, and I will keep operating that way. And then the last piece, and I think this is, for me, it's the most meaningful, is I just want to, um, you know, it's one of the most important things that we do as teachers in our schools, we notice and we recognize what kids are doing. We see them for who they are, and, and we, and we try to make sure they know that, that we see them for who they are. And so I just, and feel humbled and, and, and I really appreciate that. I feel like you have all seen what I've been trying to do here with the care and concern and the empathy that, that Joel mentioned. With the concern of having students in, with the way I try to treat people, and the way I try to lead positively and bring folks together, and so thank you for noticing that, and most especially thank you for acknowledging and appreciating it. It's something that this community has given to me, and I think gives to a lot of people. And that noticing our teachers, our students, our families, that recognizing the hard work that they do and we do, and appreciating it to them. I think that's one of the most important things any person, any community, any family, any parent, any teacher can do. So I think you've given that to me, and thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
One last thing, and, and there's still a lot of work to do. And I'm really happy that we will be working together every day to get better at it. That's the only way it's going to happen, and, and a lot of work to do, but I'm very excited to be doing it with our whole entire team.
Okay, thank you, Ben. We are going to move on. We don't have any subcommittee reports. But, and we have four action items, and I'm going to take them out of order because Adam Mayo and Gary have been here, and I know that they want to, we want to talk about the bus fee waiver, and I think that's the, of what's still in front of us is important that we do that.
So Jonathan Gray, I will lead this off, and then Gary and Adam will chime in as necessary. Let me show you this. I'll try to go through this quickly because of the late hour and get to the heart of the matter. So as you know, we've been working on it for a little while, not for very long, actually. Really since, partly through April, thinking about how we could possibly reduce bus fees. You'll see in here that we shared a preliminary proposal on May 19th, got some good input and questions from the committee, and that has put us on a path of providing you with quite a bit more information, all of which you've been shared here last time, shared this time. That includes a transportation survey, which we had 420 responses of this past week. I'll go through a little bit of that quickly. And then going to go through the proposal one more time, and then hopefully folks can, can make a vote on it. See, a lot of folks respond here across all different grades, K through eight, pre-K through eight, really. And so because we have some folks who'll be in kindergarten next year, we asked a variety of questions, so just learning about what they've done in terms of where they live. This is K through five, but also have they, you know, have they taken the bus and, and, or not that last year, this year? So it's good information here, same with K to eight. And then, so the upshot of the, of it was, we started asking questions like, if something was free, would you like more of it? And shockingly enough, everyone said yes. So it is helpful to see this, and it's also good to see this. But in hindsight, I realized if I asked the folks if they wanted to take the bus for free, yes, many folks would do. But I think it's important to know how, the, 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 the level of this. So if it's K to eight children taking the bus for free, it's eight, 89% essentially would take the bus. If, if you live 1.5 miles away and the bus was free, would you select it? And again, 90%. And then you can see, as soon as we talk about fees for 1.5 miles or closer, it, it sort of goes the opposite way pretty quickly. Doesn't go as, as much, you know, 34% folks would, would still need the bus if there's a fee as there is today. But that's a significant, this level of adoption, if there was a free, if the transportation was free, is very significant, and also it's a little daunting, very honestly. Another piece we asked about was those folks who have, who use the school choice option and opt into a different school that is not their zone school. Okay, and you can see, again, it's consistent, 87% of those folks would use free transportation if it was, they were allowed to take it for their, to their choice school. Okay? And then I think probably one of the more helpful questions here was, we asked people why they don't take a bus, and this is probably, this is as far as I know, one of the first times we asked this question. Transportation fees were limiting the factor for 25%, so people could, could pick more than one, one option here. But then also living too close to take the bus, and then also more convenient, 18% in the orange there, more convenient for my family to drive them. In some ways, that tells us that, you know, 18%, 20% almost might be the, you know, the range of folks that no matter what we did, they may not, they may not get on a bus. And then we also asked, when does your children go to school by car? So this is a little, little bit different, interesting, is that, you know, of four, four responses, 47, almost 50% said that they were, they were driving, you know, both in the morning and afternoon, and then you can see, really, only 26 folks, 26% of folks don't take a car at some point. And this is the number I think we're all aiming to, to, to diminish or, or increase rather, I say, that my child does not go to school by car, for all the reasons we talked about. So just some data we showed you in terms of how many folks are living where, zero to one miles, one to 1.5, 1.5 to two, and two plus. Okay, you can see fully, you know, 30% of our K to five population and 20% of our six A population live one mile or closer. Okay? Between one to 1.5, you add in 13% for K to five, you added a full 26%. Of course, people are more likely to live closer to the elementary schools because there are more of them. But you can see, as soon as we get to 1.0 miles, 1.5, the numbers of male students starts accelerating pretty quickly with 37% being the highest part. So these are just, again, just for information's sake, but you'll see that we haven't been able to, Adam wasn't able to get too many details on other transportation fees in this short timeframe, but even see, even so, you'll see that except for Rockport, we are by far and away, we were much less expensive in terms of our fees right now, which are 100 per child. You see, and that's round trip. You see, the, the smallest one here is $250 for, you know, for round trip, and goes up to 360 or 315 as well in Salem, North Andover, and Beverly. So just for some context, in terms of what we're already charging. So these are important limiting factors for transfer expansion, expansion of free transportation, and these are really, really have to be considered very closely by the committee. The first, then, these are in order of sort of really just, just difficulty, I'd say. The first and, and most pressing one is just available bus drivers. We are running 14 buses right now, and we have 14 current bus drivers. All 14 are being utilized. We only have one substitute, substitute driver and one new driver in training. Most notably, any new driver in training takes four to eight months to get on the road, fully, fully trained and fully licensed. That is a big hurdle in terms of bringing on new bus routes, new buses. Then you see the cost there was 30, approximately $30,000 for a new driver. We, at this point, do have two additional buses available for the fall. Okay? So that isn't as much of a hurdle as number one there. We may have two additional buses, but we don't have drivers to, to, to put in them. Okay, and it's not, and unlikely that we will. Okay? We are at this point with 14, with the same number of bus drivers as we have current buses, you know, utilized. That is a very difficult place to be in because one person for any reason, any legitimate reason, needs or any reason at all, has to be out. We are doubling up bus routes on any given day. So that's very, very tight, it's too tight, actually. And it really does limit then, more so again than, than number two, the, the buses. We do have a couple of buses we could add. We don't have the drivers at this point. Another concern, I think the survey data supports this, is the demand for free transportation could easily outstrip our capacity for next year because of numbers one and two here, possibly beyond two. It is very hard to gauge what that actual demand will be, but the survey data, I think, shows that it could potentially be very, could be quite high. If we have to move beyond those two additional buses, that's $80,000 a bus. That's not something we budgeted for because we started this process late, late in the, in the school year. So that's also a hurdle as well. So those are some important factors limiting the expansion. But we, what we are still proposing is to offer a fair bit more transportation, free transportation to a fair bit more people, and also simplifying the fee structure. So you see what's existing up there. Essentially, we have different rules for, for, for K to five, six, and seven to eight. We have different distances for K to five versus six versus eight. Okay? Something that we do have is a 200 maximum fee for any family, so no family would pay for, pays currently for more than two students. And of course, those who qualify for financial assistance ride for free. And then another component is that school choice students do not qualify for transportation. So that's currently, that's existing. What we are proposing, and this hasn't changed, is that all students K to eight. So instead of different rules between K to, K to five, sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth, we make it the same for all students K to eight. 1.5 miles are over, over, get free bus transportation. We think that's a reasonable first step for this upcoming year that would benefit many families. K to six, those folks who live 1.0 miles to 1.5 miles would be $100 per student, which is right now, that's 1.0 miles to, to, to two miles. Okay? And so we reduce that, and that's still only $100 per student, which, as you saw, is a lot lower than the districts we were able to find comparables for. We maintain the 200 maximum, maximum dollars per family. Families pay no more, pay for no more than two students. We would maintain that school choice students do not qualify for transportation. We'd also maintain that those students, this should be on a separate line, but those students who qualify for financial assistance would also ride for free. And that we would still analyze bus, what bus enrollment is in August 2020 to see if we could extend the free bus threshold towards 1.0 miles. I know this, a couple of members have expressed going further than what we proposed, but without, we believe very strongly, I mean, Mr. Mayo, Mr. Fisher, and myself, that, you know, sort of, we do a crawl, walk, run here, and for this upcoming year, that it's reasonable and would be helpful to families and get more kids on the bus. If we simplify the proposal, the fee structure, and made it as it says here, one point five miles or more for all K to eight families would 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 travel free. And then one K to six, those families, one point oh to one point five would be just the the fee we have now, a hundred dollars per student. So that's very quick because of late hour, but let me stop that and see if folks have questions that Mr. Mayo or myself can answer.
All right, Laura.
I wanted to ask specifically about the West Parish case. My understanding is that, wasn't there some, were the fees removed from West Parish bus riders at some point? And where are we on that? And is that staying? Maybe other committee members can.
I think, Adam, what was what was the bus fees for this year? Were they, weren't they, were they limited entirely?
Yeah, we did not charge this year for anyone to ride the bus. And we got, we limited the first first section because of the two miles and the limited twenty-five capacity. And then we started adding more students on. But we we voted and discussed not charging a fee at all for this year, although we did still have a limited capacity of ridership.
For West Parish specifically?
For the entire district.
I think Laura is right, I think, pre-pandemic, we
Right.
waived West Parish entirely because we realized no one could walk to West Parish, even if you lived a hundred feet away, you couldn't walk on one thirty-three, right?
That's my, that's my recollection.
Yeah, the, we, we have a policy in place that basically says that if a student lives in an area that is deemed unsafe to walk to the school, that they can ride the bus and and the fee would be waived at the discretion of the superintendent. That's what the policy says. Now, that being said, probably nobody lives basically north of the school on West Parish on on Concord Street can walk safely because there are no sidewalks. But there are people, there is a sidewalk that actually goes all the way from the railroad bridge to the cemetery on on Essex Avenue. It's not in great shape, it's not plowed, it's not, you know, it's not shoveled. But but there is a sidewalk there.
So, well, my question is really, so I just wonder where that piece fits into this proposed policy.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure, seeing as Adam and I have never worked when there wasn't a pandemic in this district. And and also, we've only worked when there have been no fees. I'm not even sure either of us were aware that that had happened or had been discussed prior to this, honestly. I mean, I wasn't, I don't remember, anyway.
You know, it also applies to students that go to veterans that live on the other side of one twenty-eight.
That I haven't aware of, yeah, yeah.
Samantha.
And I, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember, I think, you saying that when the fees were waived with West Parish, that actually didn't increase bus ridership, that people were still sort of hesitant to bus, take the bus to West Parish anyway, that the driving was still preferred.
Yeah, I don't recall the exact, you know, numbers or details, but I don't think it moved the needle the way we had hoped it would.
I don't think it moved the needle at all.
But Laura, is like, is your concern just that, like, for that particular school, that even, you know, removing the fees, that it might not actually reduce the cars?
I'm just wondering where it fits into the, you know, I mean, this is a very thoughtful, I think, crawl, what did you say, crawl, walk, run? I mean, I think that makes sense, but I'm wondering, West Parish, we have this particular issue there around transportation. And so I'm just wondering where it would fit into this policy.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, honestly, we haven't begun working on a more comprehensive approach to how we, you know, you know, reduce the number of cars across the city, get all our schools and improve in 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 increased bus ridership. And then address specific, you know, areas of concern. West Parish, you know, in Congress Street, obviously. So, you know, right now, we're, and then we need to do that. I don't want to minimize it at all. Part of it, I think, is is first seeing what me and Adam seeing what West Parish is like in the non-COVID situation, you know? And then hopefully, again, we don't know till we try this, right? If is, if we don't have any fees at West Parish, does that help, you know? And then also, there's campaign aspects and and other pieces, you know? You know, for example, one of the, one of the areas that people, families were hesitant about was bus, you know, safety on buses. But, I mean, there have, there are few, if any, incidents on buses. Doesn't mean kids aren't talking and joking and not doing that sort of thing, you know, and that, you know, but but or, you know, or but there might be a perception there, you know, that is, that is either tied to old, old things or maybe blown out of proportion. I don't know, but it's that that sort of information about why people aren't traveling the buses that we can get more and more of to help, you know, increase ridership. But so, but but what you're speaking to, I think, is, you know, the work over the next, you know, coming years, that that's more comprehensive to address the larger, the whole piece, not just one piece, which is this.
Yeah. Joel.
So my question relates to the the choice student issue. Because I would imagine that West Parish is currently the elementary school with the highest number of requests for intra-district choice. And my, if that is correct, then my assumption will be that the new EG Vets, when that comes online in a couple of years, will likely join West Parish or even eclipse West Parish and becoming the sought-after intra-district choice school. West Parish has a known traffic issue. And EG Vets, although there's been, you know, certainly higher capacity planned for it, we're certainly getting, you know, feedback and concern from the neighborhood that regardless of the setup, you're going to have potential for traffic issues over there. And so, you know, I would really encourage the the inclusion of choice students to say, hey, listen, you know, if you can get to one of the following bus stops, which will still probably require a parent to drive them, we would still prefer you to drop your kid at this bus stop than to come all the way to Concord Street, or in a couple of years, come all the way to Webster Street, because it's just, you know, it's just too much. And if you otherwise would do it, makes everything easier for everybody if we can get you to a bus stop instead of to our front door. So that's another comment, I'm almost being proposed.
The I just, I have a question about seventh and eighth graders. Do we currently, this for Adam, do we currently transport any of those kids and and do they pay a fee for that?
This year, nobody pays a fee, and we've transported pre-K through twelve this year.
Right, okay, so, but in the past, I believe that we, all seventh and eighth graders, even if they live belonging to miles, paid a fee to ride.
Yes.
It was not required that we transport anybody beyond sixth grade, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. The, my recollection of when we waived the fees for West Parish, when we were first having a trying to deal with the traffic issue there, was that a lot of people who were paying a fee just stopped paying it, you know, didn't have to pay the fee anymore. And this, and this kid still rode the bus, and that the swing was only about seven or eight kids that rode the bus. You know, and it had, you know, because it was free. But a lot of kids that were riding the bus just continued to ride the bus, they just didn't pay for it. Melissa.
So, my memory is from years ago, when we brought in this fee, that the fee schedule is what is being proposed tonight. Because I remember thinking, we were going to charge a fee, we didn't have to transport students that lived under two miles, but that we were going to and do it at one point five and then charge the hundred dollar fee. So this, to me, is not much of a change, and I don't see it being a good solution to what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, we're going to transport the kids that live between one point five and two miles for free.
Right, one point five for two miles, and that's what we were doing. When we originally made this plan, students under one point five miles paid the fee. So that's what's being proposed tonight.
That, that, that's, that, I'm sorry, let me show you on the screen here, what, what the the current practice, it was not this year, obviously, prior to, okay? And 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 it just in one document here, okay, which is in your packet, okay? So, so the orange here, is that big enough, can people see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the orange here, again, it's it's a complicated, let's say, two point for K to five, two point five, two point, two miles and over is free, okay? One mile to two miles, it's a hundred dollars per student, okay? So if you live between, you know, any, any distance that I wanted to, you're being charged a hundred dollars per student, okay? Sixth grade, okay, again, two miles over, free, that's the state benchmark, okay? There are one point five to two miles, a hundred, a hundred dollars per student, okay? That's, this is the fee starts at one point, at one point five miles. For seventh and eighth, anything at all, okay? We only will transport you two miles and over, and that's a hundred, a hundred dollars per student, okay? So if you go here for seven, eight, we're reducing it, okay? And we're giving it to free to everybody. Okay, so, so right now, you can only get transportation and be charged for it to seven, eight, okay? We're now saying that it's free for everyone over one point five and over, okay? So that, from my standpoint, that's a significant change. Now, now you go in K to five, we have the same rule for all K to six, okay? Which is one point five miles and over is free. And then we are only charging now for K to six, one point oh mile, one point five. That's the only place we're charging now, okay? So I don't, so.
This is, this doesn't seem right to me, and I thought, I remember the seventh and eighth grade kids were taking, paying KDA to go to school.
So, Adam, can you also, they also do, they also, kids also do, sorry, at, O'Malley, is also do KDA. Adam, can you explain that, please?
Yes, so our routes were set up, or in the past, were set up in conjunction with KDA bus routes. So students had the option, if there wasn't a bus route that was close to their servicing there, first like seventh and eighth grade, they could pay a bus pass to KDA and ride. So we have three buses that service the middle school as a secondary option to students. If easier or closer to their house, there's a KDA bus stop along the route. Unfortunately, KDA doesn't service all the areas of Gloucester. So we want to make sure we can include as many students as possible to bus service. So we can't just shift everything to KDA, as with the high school that currently their routes go. But they do have the option to take KDA, and they, this year, they have the option, as we expanded our routes a little bit. They do have the option for Gloucester Public Schools.
My memory is completely different from when we, when we originally did this. It was probably like ten years ago.
Yeah, it was long.
And I thought the city was giving us money and a budget to go towards transportation. It was split between the rank and transportation when we did this.
You're right, Melissa, you're right, we did. That we had to, the same thing we were charging for athletics, and that's how the Gloucester education, that that athletics week started. We had to charge for KDA, that's how come they got KDA, because we couldn't get buses, et cetera, et cetera. And then we charged them, it was first a hundred dollars per year, they had to buy the pass at directly from KDA, they could get a discount if they needed assistance, KDA had assistance, or we would supplement it at half price. And then eventually, it went away, I don't know if they're still paying, but I know that they all had to get bus passes. Remember, they had, we had to get my Ds, bus passes, the whole thing.
So I don't see this as a successful solution like you may, only because of the past history.
I think way back, Melissa, that that they were transporting kids at one point five miles, but I think that got changed.
They were, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so to me, this, and and back then.
Changed to two miles, you know.
Two miles, somewhere along the line. But originally, when we, when we started charging fees, it was free, one point five miles out for grades K through six. And then seven and eight did KDA.
But it hasn't been recently that way, it's been two miles.
But not for too long. So I can't help but wonder what success we're going to have in traffic if we're only going back to what we had a couple of years ago.
Well, I think we need to try something. And 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 this, and this is a step in the right direction, and we can adjust it, we can, we can find out what it does. I mean, you can do all the surveys in the world, you're not going to really know who's going to get, climb on the bus in September, until September.
I can't help but wonder, to ask, so I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the chart showed for grades K through six that live one to two miles away, we were going to charge a hundred dollars.
One to one, one to one.
Yeah, so one and a half. So I can't help but wonder, is that fee to deter people from not taking the bus? Because we're not going to have enough buses? Because it seems to me, if we were really looking for a solution to stop traffic, we wouldn't be trying to capture a hundred dollars for that age group. I can't imagine a kindergartner and first grade and second graders walking that length to school, and I think that's part of the reason we have the traffic that we do. So that's a targeted area where I don't see is going to make a difference if we're still charging them a hundred dollars. I think that's the area that's causing that particular age group and that that distance is what's causing most of the traffic, in my opinion.
Go ahead, Laura.
Well, it just, you know, I don't have the decade, you know, I don't know what it used to be like. I think, I think we need to have a plan, like, we need to make a change. I know what you're saying about the small kids, Melissa, but perhaps we try this, we see how big the change can be. Like, what, who, who are we going to get to take the bus? I think there are families who are never going to take the bus, and I think there are families who might, with some education and communication, like, when we communicate about what bus ridership means, how much easier it can make your morning, et cetera, et cetera, your afternoon. You know, there's ways to communicate this, and then we try. And if we don't get enough of a response, because the problem is, of course, we can't do it for free, right? We don't have money for, for new buses, or we don't have new bus drivers, so we can't do a blanket, just offer it. So we try incrementally, I mean, isn't that the goal here, just to try this incrementally and see what response we get?
That, I would say, I mean, I think we have the common goal of 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 reducing as much car, car traffic as as possible. I mean, that's, but but I, it is right that, you know, crawl, walk, run, which Adam, you know, coined, honestly, is about incrementally, we, I, I worry that we promise something we cannot deliver on in August or in September. If we open it fully, and we we do, we do not have a path towards having additional drivers that we would need in that case. So I'm very wary, and so, and again, we may find out in August, we can expand it. And if we can't expand it then, then we would take the next year to budget properly and and and, you know, hopefully hire drivers and train them, so then the next year, we could expand it further. But but I want to be really clear that this is not, you know, the end all be all of this attempt, this is just the first step.
And the hundred dollar fee for for kids that live between a mile and a mile and a half is providing a service that some people may find desirable. I mean, that's, you know, not everybody wants to drive the kid to school every day. And but, you know, depending on where they live, they might not want to walk a mile and a half, so Kathy.
I just want to also point out that the policy is still in place, that if they qualify for free bus ridership, then the financing, if they do live under that mile and a half, is not an impediment, because they'd be on the bus for free, anyway.
This is, is worth trying to see what, see if it changes. I mean, you know, Ben put up a couple of numbers there, and everybody loves free. Maybe that, you know, maybe there's those, right now, there's. right now, there's x number of people that are, are paying a fee, or would be paying a fee, between the mile and a half and two miles, and, and, you know, and, and weighing that fee against, um, some other means of transportation, and, and maybe that, if it's free, they're gonna, they're gonna go with the bus. We won't know until it happens.
Is there clarity? Hmm, my experience is that there's not a lot of clarity about where you live in relation to the, I mean, how do people know if they're one point five miles and above? Is there gonna be sort of clarity, so that people know that they are at that cusp, and that they are now eligible? How do we communicate that?
Um, a couple of things, uh, Adam, I'd like to hear your ideas, and that, what, what we do know now is Adam's, was, was able to figure out how we can, um, through our, actually, and if you can explain how we know ourselves, anyway, internally, how far people live, um, uh, from the school. Through the routing.
So, uh, yeah, all of our students are into our routing software, our routing software, um, goes through the Bing Maps. Um, in addition, I think it also does a Google aspect, um, and it routes everybody from school, their school to home distance, um, so I can put their name into our system, and it will tell me what their distance from school to home is. Um, so as I've talked to other juror districts, is they have folks apply, I wanna move to an online application, um, in addition to a paper application this year, um, they apply, um, it is verified, and then a response is sent, um, of a yes or no, or they check with the transportation director of their distances, um, from school. Um, and that is common across a lot of districts, um, having folks apply, um, even if they are below that cutoff, um, to have that application on hand already, um, the information can be verified and, uh, response can be sent.
Would there be a way to be proactive and sort of go to the people in that one point? The people who weren't eligible before and who will be now, and send them letter, I mean, the bus, as a parent, the bus, before you came, Adam, it was very hard to get information. And I think if we're proactive, and we go to people and not wait for them to come to us, right? And say, hey, you're now eligible at one point five miles, you could take the bus. I think it may, uh, be more productive than waiting for them to come to us, because I'm sure there's tons of people who are like, ah, no, we're not eligible for the bus, and it's not a question.
Yeah, I can definitely, um, look into that, I know I did a lot of that this year. Um, when families are looking at, oh, I didn't know we were under two miles, or we were over two miles. Um, so I think that's been a large educational piece, um, to it, so, uh, we can definitely look at that. Um, and also, most of our bus stops are within that one point five to two miles from the school. Um, or most, you know, obviously, we're not picking up children that are closer than a mile to the school, so that also helps us gauge some of the things that, um, parents look at, oh, there's not a bus stop. It's closer to walk to school than it is to walk one point five, two miles to the bus stop, when I live three tenths of a mile to the school, um, so that helps gauge it as well, but definitely, we can look into doing some educational aspects.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, um, five minutes before we have to take a vote to extend this meeting. So, do we wanna move this forward? I do, I think, I think we need to try something.
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion that we, um, uh, approve the, um, bus fee structure as presented. Um, but, uh, look for, um, uh, to review it in September, again.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Melissa?
Um, I'm gonna support the motion, because I think it's a great start. Um, and the, the concern I have, which has been presented tonight, is not having enough bus drivers, but if we did have bus drivers, I would hope that we were, would be having a different conversation. That's the only thing that I don't wanna be put in a situation where we can't, but I expect more, if we can do it.
Joel?
Uh, I'm gonna vote against this, I don't think we're going far enough, and this whole, you know, we won't be able to find a bus driver. I think this year has taught us anything, it's that if we have to get something done, we get it done, we get it done well, I'm, I'm of zero concern that if there was a demand that required more bus drivers, that we, that we wouldn't pull it off, we always pull this stuff off. Um, I, I think we need to be a little bolder, a little braver with this, and, and really actually move the needle to try and encourage people to get out of their personal cars and back into the buses, so I'm voting against it, in hopes that the future, there'll be a, a more robust proposal.
Anyone else? Laura?
Just the last thing I wanna say is, in the future, when we revisit this, as is in the motion, I'm hoping that the, uh, if we decide to go further, that we can, uh, bring elec- electric school buses into the conversation.
All right. Just for the record, I believe our, our, our current leases, um, go for two more years, is that correct, Adam?
Yes, we have two years now on this current lease.
But, that being said, it's not too early to start talking about electric buses.
Jonathan, you're not gonna be able to see me or hand or whatever, because I had to go to the iPad.
Okay.
But I wanted to say is, I'm gonna vote for this just for a conversation. Um, I don't wanna wait till September, I wanna status, you know, see what we can do, see what the budget is, see what it is, like Joel says, to see what's gonna happen, because if you're gonna have to charge people or not charge people, whatever, that's gonna be like a number one hitch, and I'm leaving now, because it's eleven o'clock, and this is the third time I agreed with Joe, so I'm outta here. So, so, but I think that we should bring it up in August again, and look what we can do, and also, um, let's, uh, bring in, um, you know, Ed Conley to say, you know what, we'd like in the beginning, um, some police, um, detailing, just around that area, to figure out if, you know, if it, what, what, what's they think, because you know what, they know, deal with traffic, okay? And to see what we can do too, because, uh, I've driven by, since everyone's complained about West Gloucester, this, this and that, and there were times, there's nothing. Honestly, I stood in line, I never knew what it was, one time, I forgot that it was school, and I'm going like, oh, what happened? And then two seconds, it was gone, and, and each car, like, you go, I go, you go, it was very respectful, the way they're doing it, they already have their own thing, that one comes out of West Parish, one goes in, one comes out, and it's really respectful, and the ones of us, they have to go straight. You, you see what's going on ahead of you, and you do it. Um, is there, you know, in the morning, I haven't done it, I, I'll go by and see how it is. Um, you know, we already put signs around the, the whole neighborhood, it's all complaining, you know, the sidewalks, you can't walk. They put up some new signs, Ted Costa sent me some pictures this morning, if you drive by there, there's new different kinds of signs, they wanna work a little down further, of flashing lights also, so, I mean, the neighborhood is also working together with everyone, so I really, I'm gonna support this today, just so we can have a conversation to, really don't wait till September, let's start in August, because you don't wanna wait the last minute, and, because people need time, you can't tell the parents in September, guess what, you're not gonna get the bus, you are gonna get the bus, or whatever, if you can't get the bus driver, or whatever. Also, let's not wait till September, please, and bring this up again in August, thank you.
Maria, roll call vote.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
No.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes, for discussion purpose only in August.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Okay, it carries, uh, uh, six in favor, one opposed. Um, it's, it's eleven o'clock.
Good, Adam.
Thank you, Adam, um, and, uh, do we want to continue the meeting?
I move that we extend the meeting for, what, do we have to say a timeframe?
Thirty minutes at a time.
How many, thirty?
Thirty.
I move that we extend the meeting another thirty minutes, so we can take care of the other two action items, or three action items.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, Maria.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes, if Ben brings me an espresso tomorrow morning at work.
I write a letter to my boss while I'm late.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Hey, it started this way, folks, in August, might as well end this way, right? I mean, come on now.
That's all book out.
We, we, we should be able to take, tear, scare the remaining business fairly quickly, um, should be, I said. Um, so we have, um, the approval of Tamestis, uh, Local Union Forty-two Food Service Workers Contract, effective July first, twenty twenty, uh, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, this has already been discussed in an executive session, decision, and, um, and approved, and, um, I would, um, so move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Thank God, we discussed it in executive session already.
Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes, you always know, I, even though I do support it, I vote present.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Okay, it carries, uh, five and six in favor and one present. Uh, we have the approval of Gloucesters, uh, Association of Educational Paraprofessionals Contract Effective July first, twenty twenty, uh, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, as, uh, as the previous one, this has been discussed in executive session, uh, it's been voted in executive session, it's been ratified by, uh, Gabe, and it's now our job to, um, to vote it in public, so, um, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, Maria.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Joel, Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
I support it, but I vote present.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Okay, it carries, uh, six in favor, one present, uh, with acceptance of Gloucester Education Foundation Grant to the Gloucester High School class of twenty twenty-one events, uh, for events, in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Thanks.
Thank you, right, you're right, uh, Maria, roll call vote.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Again, it carries, uh, si- uh, seven in favor, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Um, the, um, I'm gonna take these a little bit out of order, discussion of policy regarding submissions of anonymous letters. Um, it has always been our, um, uh, not policy, but our practice, that we did not, um, enter anonymous letters into the record. Uh, we had an unusual, we, we, we've seen an uprising, an unusual situation has happened, uh, with, um, GTA members reading anonymous letters. Um, and then we had, uh, Marion Boucher re- reading another anonymous letter at, at Oral Communications. And, um, we don't have any official policy regarding, um, how we deal with anonymous letters. So, um, I put this on here, uh, as a referral, uh, and I'd like to refer it to, um, the program subcommittee, uh, to, um, develop a policy regarding how we as a school committee deal with anonymous letters. Melissa?
Can I ask that we have legal counsel refer it? I mean, when you are in open meeting law, you have to state your name and address for the record for a reason, and I don't even think that, uh, anonymous letters can be entered into the record, so I would wanna hear a legal opinion before we make a policy.
Well, the problem that I saw, and, and why I didn't, it basically invoke that, is they were being read by somebody who did identify themselves.
I would still want a legal opinion before we develop a policy.
Okay.
I'll make sure, um, reach out, I guess, as we, as we go forward with it.
Okay, but I, I just think that, um, you know, if somebody has a letter and they wanna send it to us, um, and don't sign the name to it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't enter it into the record, if they did sign the name to it, we would. So, that's the difference. Okay, so, Joel, you're going to, uh, pay attention to that?
Yeah, we'll get it, um, and, uh, per Melissa's suggestion, we'll make sure that we have advice from counsel.
Okay.
And we can just call the Attorney General's office as well.
Um, okay, uh, update on, uh, East Gloucester Veterans School Building. Um, last night, the, uh, City Council voted, um, to approve the special permit for the height, uh, um, for the, uh, new building, um, we also, in this past week, received, um, approval of our, um, by the, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, of our, um, uh, uh, sixty percent, is it sixty, forty percent design development plans, um, as far as providing, um, space for, um, for a special education, DESC has to sign off on that, and not MSBA. Um, there's a school building committee meeting tomorrow, uh, at five o'clock. Um, the, um, we, uh, we've been informed that there's a date set for the, um, for the hearing, um, of the, um, lawsuit of July fifteenth. And, um, I don't know, anything else? Laura?
So, just to understand, so that lawsuit then wasn't, uh, dismissed? I think last we heard, or last I heard, there was a possibility, it wasn't gonna be.
The, 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 what, the, the lawsuit was, um, we, our side, uh, made a, um, two-hundred-page statement of why the lawsuit should be dismissed, and, um, uh, what they asked for was summary judgment, which maybe the lawyers here can explain to you the difference between dismissed and summary judgment, but, um, a- and then they, um, the plaintiffs have, um, ten days, ten business days, I think, to reply, that is, and they've replied, so now the whole thing goes to the judge.
Okay.
And the judge set the date of July fifteenth, is when he's gonna, going to review it.
Okay.
Here the case.
And, and. Expectations, or temporary rotations, although not impossible, it is highly unlikely that the judge would do what's called ruling from the bench, so there's very small chance July fifteenth is the answer. More likely than not, the judge, he or she, will quote, take it under advisement, discuss it with their clerks, re-review what had been filed in light of the oral communicate, uh, the oral arguments made by both sides, and then issue a written order in the following weeks, um, you know, beyond that, so just because July fifteenth is, is, is the date, don't think that July sixteenth, we're gonna have an answer. Hopefully, it's, you know, shortly thereafter, but it's unlikely to be that day.
Right.
And Laura, just so you know, a summary judgment is, is like having a mini trial based on law. So, um, I got the opportunity to review all the documents, the other, yesterday, I went online and looked at them all, and there's, there's a lot of information there. Um, so the judge will, like Joel said, hear the oral arguments on the fifteenth, very likely take it under advisement, because there's a lot there. And then hopefully, um, there was a motion for expedited, um, hearing, so there's a sense of urgency, um, at a, as a request on, from the city side, to get this, uh, resolved quickly. So, um, hopefully, we'll hear shortly thereafter.
Hmm, good.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and then the other thing is, um, that's not on the agenda, but we're bringing it up in the, you know, continuing, um, old business, is, uh, getting back to, uh, meetings in person. And, uh, what I'd like to do, if, if people don't object, is that our next meeting, two weeks from tonight, that we meet, um, in person at the high school, and, um, but, um, use the system, um, uh, we, that we have used with, with the bargaining units, we're not gonna invite the public in. Um, we will, uh, invite the public in by Zoom, um, unless, um, there's objections to that, um, that's what I'm going to make arrangements.
I don't have any objection, any reason to not let them into the room also, if they wanna come in person, like, have both options for them?
Yeah, oh, well, well, the pandemic is over in a couple of days.
Yeah, well, um, mechanically, there is, I, 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 I'm not sure, I, I'd have to run that by grant, um, and, and see, but, right now, we can set up the, for the, for people to communicate with us through Zoom. Or we could set up to have them communicate through us in person. But if, if there's a hybrid, then maybe we'll do that. Let me look into it. But I think we will meet in person at the high school library. Samantha?
And just so that, you know, even if we do decide that we're gonna let public in, I think it's important for people to realize that because we're still on school grounds, that we're gonna be wearing masks, right?
Well, that's my question. When does the mask policy end?
The school year's over at that point, right?
Yeah. So this is, this is an anomaly with the, with Desi that I haven't gotten clarification on, which is Desi has said very clearly that the school, the summer months are operating in schools the same way this, this school year has been operating, okay? I'm not clear yet on what they mean about like this type of meeting or our administration office building. So, because this meeting is June twenty-third, right? Is that June twenty-third we're thinking?
Yes.
So, so I, I have to give clarification on, are we at that point operating, you know, in the school buildings when no students are around, like this time after hours as, as an office building or in those rules, which of course are masks, no masks, or are we operating under school rules and which one? So we'll find that out in the next couple, next few days.
And I'd like to know if the library that we're meeting in has air conditioning?
Does.
Yeah. So anyways, we, we'll look into the issue about whether or not we can let the public in. But, but we will meet in person. And, you know, and any administrators that need to be there. Okay, because we're gonna get the school improvement plan for the high school as well as the preschool. So there'll be some administrators there, right?
Maria, can you follow up with Grant and just give him a heads up? You'll remember faster than I will.
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then it's my intention, unless there's some emergency, that we will have no meetings in July. Okay?
Ben, you good with that?
Yeah, I think that's okay by me. Yeah, appreciate that.
If we added up all the hours that we've met this year, it's probably more than we've met in the past two or three years.
Yeah, no, I usually, I usually give everyone a hard time for taking the summer off, but I'm, I'm not doing that this year.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Maria, roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes, good night.
Mayor Taken?
Yes, good night.
Watson?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Ms. Weason?
Yes, good night. Happy birthday, Samantha.
What a way to spend your birthday.
We're all going out now, right? I see a drift in five. All right.
Night, all.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned and
Thank you, folks.
We'll see you all soon.